All right, we're gonna-
Okay. We're gonna start the meeting for the workshop. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll please.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here. Uh, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Malloy, again, we have some guests here, two trustees and a road superintendent from Mesopotamia Township, uh, north of northern westernmost corner of the county. Um, they were fed a rumor from a former volunteer that police services were gonna be cut up in the northern corner of Mesopotamia Township. Um, I just wanna publicly state and reiterate that it's never ever been discussed with the sheriff, with the commissioners, with this board of commissioners, with the previous board of commissioners. Over the last six months, we've increased service in northwest corner of the county, um, after being requested for more patrols by the, uh, some of the Amish elders up there. Um, the volunteer that spread that rumor had no basis to do that from us, from the sheriff's department, there's no fact to it at all. So I would ask that if anyone is hearing that rumor in the, in the county, please, uh, stop that rumor immediately. They can call me or, uh, Commissioner Hernandez or Commissioner Bernard or the sheriff himself if you hear that rumor and we'll try to put an end to that, um, to that. Uh, whatever budget Sheriff's Department gets out of this board even now, we've never talked once about cutting any service at all to any constituents or any township. If anything, we're starting from where the last sheriff had his budget and with the services he did provide, which did include service to the townships throughout the county. And, uh, we hope to expand on that and increase patrols in those areas if anything else. Um, but at no time did this body or the sheriff ever once state anything remotely close to that they're gonna cut services, especially to Mesopotamia. So gentlemen, I apologize for you having to drive in here. They were asked to come in here and kinda fight for it to talk about it. They, they were given bad information or misinformation, disinformation, um, whatever you wanna call it, but I would hope that not only the gentleman that spread that rumor to them, but other ones that may dissipate that through the county, um, cease that. We don't need to scare any residents. Um, that's the easiest way to kind of attack government, start rumors, whether you make a rumor about the seniors or, or the sheriff's department or budgets, you know, it's facts are in this room. And we see a lot of stuff on Facebook and drama and it doesn't take long for one little rumor like that started by a lie from somewhere or bad information from somewhere to spread through the internet and the next thing you know, we have panic on our hands and there's, there's no reason for that in this instance. So, um, Ray with the Tribune, we are not cutting any services at all to the northern part of the town, county or any township in the county. If anything, we're gonna work with our sheriff. He wants to protect the citizens, uh, as good or better than any sheriff ever has in this county and we're gonna do our best as a board here to make sure that he has the tools to be able to do that. But, um, I would never use that as a threat. Like, I hope that nobody on this board would ever use cutting services as a threat to get their way for tax dollars or for, for political gain or political means. Um, and that's why I guess I'm be heavily denied, gentlemen, to make sure that it's spread out there that no way, shape or form are we gonna allow that or have we discussed that or even would we entertain something like that unless it's a last ditch resort and, you know, it's not gonna happen.
Like you said, Commissioner, um, they always have access to the commissioners. I know I speak for myself and Commissioner Bernard and the sheriff himself, actually. Mark's here, he could tell you in representation for, uh, the sheriff's department. It's absolutely fabricated. There's no merit to it, so, um, you can rest assured you'll still have service there.
And not only that-
I'm honored to hear it from you, David.
Right. No, yes, it's the road superintendent's here. We even talked too about, there were some complaints about the road conditions up there and the last engineer already initiated starting to do some more stuff, especially in some of the rural roads, the way they tar and ship it and, and maybe dig a little deeper into the bed to make sure, you know, we know, we know the horses homes will cause problems when they go to stock and, uh, the Amish community is well aware, but also they're the ones that wanna work with us, maintain the safety of the roads up there also. So we've been working with the new engineer for the same thing, you know, as soon as we get done with this meeting, I'll make a phone call to make sure he extra knows the Mesopotamia on the map. You guys, it took your time to come down here and, you know, we want you to get the best service treated like every other township in the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time to be in here.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Do you old, do you old that engineer, uh, promise working with the state at the end of, uh, Parkman Mesko Road? Cause it's, there's nowhere for water to go.
What road is that?
Parkman Mesko. The county road, the eighty seven, you know, state.
Right, is that in Mesopotamia Township?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna have the engineer calling you, Jamie, and, uh, you wanna write the best phone number for him to get a hold of his cellphone or something, I'll make sure he calls you today. I'll request that of him to, and we'll make sure-
It was started last year already-
Right.
With the old, uh, engineer-
Right.
And you had supervisor come out, you had already contacted the state.
Okay.
So I know where it stands now.
Well, we still have, a lot of the staff is still there. Probably some of the main guys, I don't think-
Gary, Mr. Gary, you know anything about it?
Yeah, right here, here, Jamie.
But it sounds like it was being handled through our, um, highway maintenance crews, taking care of it with the state. But, yeah, it's just a matter of initiating, uh, some drainage work with, uh, the state.
Gary, can you get with Jamie and, and get with David later and make sure they make contact with these gentlemen?
Yeah, I'll talk to them as soon as I get back to and see who's leading that effort far off.
Okay. We'll keep up on that, you call and check up on and we'll, I'll let you know when we find out for next meeting.
That'll work.
Okay. Yeah, we know there's a problem there, um, as, uh, Beth is with us here today for the tourism, um, division department, whatever you're gonna call it. I'm, I'm all flustered now, it's dead rumor for nothing. Anyway, um, we did a tour in northwest Trumbull County where we, we did an economic tour. We took a, we got one of the, uh, tour buses, we brought a bunch of state reps and people from USDA and other dignitaries to learn about what's going on in our county. We toured a factory up in Mesko, um, we went to a cabinet shop up there and we saw the, you know, the issues are there. One of the issues that was brought up to us too is we've got furniture stores, we had a lot of industry there. People think, oh, it's Amish, it's just buggies, it's not. They, they have business up there, there's economic development in that area where there are semis coming and going hauling furniture to New York City, to New Jersey and farm equipment all over the world. I think it was like eighty countries or something were buying these, uh, uh, hay-
Hay accumulators.
Hay accumulators. And so we do have traffic with that, so the roads need to be maintained for that reason also. When you got a big semi hauling furniture down one of the rural roads that are tar and ship, it doesn't take long for that road to get eaten up. But, um, and we had problems too where some of the furniture was getting damaged before it hit its final destination in New York City and other places. And it wasn't from the trip, it was from the first mile from when they left the, the woodshop, getting the five thirty fours where a lot of the furniture was getting damaged because of getting banged around with the road. So we understand that, we understand that's an issue and that's something that, that although it's, um, Amish area where people say, oh, they don't pay their, they would have license plate taxes, it's not paying for the roads, those semis, the trailers that haul the furniture, that haul their goods, those do have license plates on them and they do pay taxes on that stuff and it is part of the road system. Plus they do make a contribution every year to the county, um, just for use of the buggies, even though there's not license plates, the community does make a, a contribution. Um, so they are an equal part of our county.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor and just to spell the rumor, they do pay property taxes as well.
Yes.
Uh, there's a lot-
I'm sorry, I was talking about road taxes.
Yeah, but, but that goes towards, towards the township and, and you, a lot of times people take their general fund, sometimes they have road levies, things like that, that go to the ta, the townships go to the tax, go to, or, uh, need that, so they require those taxes. In addition, many of them, even though they don't technically own a vehicle, um, may actually own a vehicle through someone else who is maybe their person, their person that hauls them for jobs, the folks that do trades, they have tags on those trailers, they have tags on those vans, uh, whether it's sometimes actually, depending on the tradesmen, it, they might actually own vans. So, um, it's, they're, they are paying tag tax as well. I used to get that a lot as a trustee, uh, oh, the Amish don't pay taxes, oh, yes, they do.
So I think for one last time, you care about that part of the county, you care about that township and anyone says we don't, I'm coming to this room, we'll take care of it. You guys are free to go, we have other business to attend to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Do we have Doc here, coroner, do we wanna, you wanna proceed, should we proceed or stop?
Uh, we can, he's, he's, he's one of the most high paid employees in the county, so we wanna get him out of here and back to work too.
Yeah, we gotta get him back to work.
Mine's two minutes.
Yep.
Larry D'Amico, coroner's office. Um, so our new cooler that we purchased in November is gonna be arriving probably mid-February and I don't have the, without the budget set, I don't have money in appropriation to pay for the installation. It's gonna be roughly six thousand dollars. Um, we can take that out of my budget, I just need it put in so that I can use it.
You have some input, Chrissy?
Um, we can do the over budget on that until the budget's set.
However-
You know, I can figure it.
Okay. So Doc, we've, we've been talking about your department every meeting since our first meeting here and, uh-
Do we have a plan?
Well, we don't have, we don't have a plan yet, but I got two requests from you.
Okay.
Um, and I know you're not gonna like the first request, but in due diligence, to be fair, so that we turn over every rock to make sure we look at every option, I would like for you to attend a meeting, um, with a Mahoney County Commissioner, one of our commissioners, Mahoney County Coroner and the Port Authority. And they do have a building in Austintown that they have requested that we look at at least to see if there's any way we can merge services to save money. I don't wanna just say no, um, it is right across the border and it is something they are offering at a rate that'll be probably a lot less than we could find anything else. So I would just ask that you, we just have the meeting just to see, due diligence wise, if there's any legs to that, if there's anything that could be done and if there isn't, there isn't, but at least we can say that we looked at the options to save the taxpayers money.
Um, well, the big question's gonna be, do we wanna intermingle services where we're bringing a lot to the table and they're not bringing much and we probably lose services by doing it? That's the big question.
What I would answer that is, there's not in a sense we're gonna merge services, but we can maybe share facility. If they're gonna set up a coroner's operating room or they're gonna set up offices, they've got a place that's like fifty thousand square feet extra, um, is there a way we can do something like that and maybe not handle their autopsies? They have their own people, their own staff, their own, just to look and see if there's anything that can be shared. Right now, we're looking at one building, we looked at two million dollars to move into, another building, if we were to stay where you are, we're looking at upwards of a million to retool the old fire department at the fairgrounds, move EMA and then put you in that building there. Mr. Hickey, uh, here with us and I know we've discussed that and he's agreeable to that plan, which right now seems to be the cheapest plan. Um, and then if you're putting the cooler in now, you know, it may be able to stay right where it is, um, if you were able to retool that building, um, where you are now. But those are some of the options, but we need to move ahead with this and I think we need to start having regular meetings. The other meeting I want you to attend, my second request, is, I, we got a call from Insight and they have the building on Elm Road, the outpatient facility on Elm Road. They said they have, um, again, miles of open space there with nobody utilizing it and they would like to request to have a meeting to see if there's a fit for them to tool, if they could build you a coroner's lab or whatever office there, if we would utilize that facility on Elm Road. So they're looking for a tenant, they're looking for someone in there. We did run off a steward, um, that's where a morgue has been until steward went under. Now the new owners, if they would make a long-term commitment at that and share some of the costs of getting you in there, I think, again, that's an option we need to look at so that we say that we didn't just put you somewhere, that we looked at every option out there. So if you can take those two meetings, I would appreciate it. I don't think we can mandate or whatever, but I think those are responsible to just look at all the options that are out there.
Doc, I have a question and we, uh, we mentioned the EMA building, is that, is, you, I mean, is that a doable building for you? Um, it would be a retrofit. Is the space there? Yes. Is it ideal for what we want? It would take some maneuvering. I mean, we could make it work if that's the question.
Um, I think, uh, Commissioner, we had heard that, uh, Mr. Hickey had mentioned that he was looking at making a move and it seemed logical if Doc thought that it would work.
Well, it all boils down to money, guys.
It's the money.
You know, um-
I think it's the most, I think it would be the most speed-
We all know that you need a new facility, you know, along with nine-one-one and the Dogtown. It's just, where do we get the money? Personally, I don't like the idea of us merging with Mahoney County.
I, I, I second that.
I think we need our, I think we need our own county coroner in Trumbull County.
Mhm.
I saw the kinda look on your, on your face, I don't think you're for it either. Um, I, I just, I just don't think that's a good move.
No.
Um-
I mean, to me, we have little to gain and a lot to lose.
I, 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 I agree and, you know what? And, and if you disagree with it, I mean, you gotta say you disagree with it because I certainly disagree.
I mean, I, I can appreciate what Commissioner Malloy is bringing to the table about at least exploring it, but personally speaking, I would have to say, Commissioner, that I don't think that we should, that this type of service mingle, intermingle that with Trumbull County. I think Mahoney has there, we have ours and I, I believe that it would be best to stay in Trumbull County. As a nice gesture, we could say that we sent the doc there, you know, to look at it, but, uh, you know, I, I just, I, I wouldn't agree-
Well, it's our port authority that bought the building and so it's our, our port authority works from Mahoney into Trumbull.
No, I understand, I understand.
They've got plenty of space and instead of, they're gonna set it up for a lab or set it up for coroner's office, they've got tons of space, then maybe there's some shared services in there, shared resources in there that could make that building whole and do-
I think ultimately it's up to Doc. Well, maybe they'll buy us a building then.
Was that?
Have the four or thirty buy us a building then.
Well, if, if we had one in the county, that's an op, that's what they did there. You know, it's, it, it is a, bought, bought by our port authority.
So, so looking for a building that-
So with our, with our, uh, Insight, who scheduled that meeting? Me? Insight? How does it work?
You can, I'll, I'll get you, I'll get with you after, I'll call you later and get you the phone numbers-
Okay.
Of who you need to talk to there.
Okay.
But they, they made the request through me when we were at a gr, a grand opening in the hospital. I got a follow-up phone call last week saying, hey, is there any possibility this happening? Can you come and look at the facility and could this happen here? They're looking for tenants in the building, we were a good partner with the previous hospital, uh, they know we don't wanna go back to the hospital, you know, I already said to them the conditions that are there and they said, you know, what about Elm Road? There's, there's plenty of room out there.
So answer me this, from the county standpoint, is it better to be tenant and pay rent for the next thirty or forty years or is it better to invest the money now, some infrastructure and have our own building? We don't have to worry about Insight being a viable thing in the community, there's not that risk anymore, we ran into that risk in Trumbull. Where does the county, where do we feel?
You're asking that question, are you, are you thinking about, I'm, I'm thinking you're thinking EMA would be a better choice?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking the county separate from anybody else who were, I mean, essentially by paying rent, we're gonna pay the building off if we had just built it ourselves. We make the investment. Oh, I, I'm worried about moving into that building and in five years, that company may not be viable anymore and we're in the same situation we are now where I'm moving out and we're in some garage waiting for another building now.
I agree.
I, I agree with that too, but we're looking at, we know about a million bucks if we were to buy it, or if we were to retool what we need to do in our, in our own building. But then there's money involved in retooling the other building to fit for EMA where we were paying, I believe, we were paying thirty thousand dollars a year for the, the morgue service at the hospital. So rent was thirty grand a year. You know, that's, that's thirty years worth of rent paid and for the same price of what we would be paying to have our own building. Just looking at the cost, we don't have the big money up front and we wanna finance it, that is, that's an option. I, I'd, of course, I'd love to have this own, our own building, but we're looking at trying to-
You know, just your-
We need money.
The one thing you have to keep in mind too is the thirty thousand dollars with the two thousand and five rate Trumbull was charging us. I imagine if they do a two or three million dollar build out, I don't think it's gonna be the rate we were paying in two thousand and five, which was a discounted rate then. I suspect, and I can't tell you that for now, but I suspect that's gonna be considerably more money.
Absolutely, it would.
Well, I think the other thing we have to see, um, if they move to, um, Bezetta, are, are they gonna be able to get a grant, do that? That'd be the other question.
We will. John, Hickey, I'm all tied to EMA. I am not going to sit here and guarantee you a claim.
John, Doc, John.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I cannot sit here today and guarantee you that, uh, I will get a grant. What I can guarantee is I will work with everything I have to get that money. I don't want to do this based on, you know, if Representative Joyce creates up a little bit of money and we all know what's going on with the federal government right now. I, I don't wanna tell you guys, yeah, we can get it because I don't know.
Do you have an anticipated budget on what it would cost you to get into that other position?
Not yet. I'm waiting for the board to-
I mean, like just a roundabout figure, maybe?
Probably a half million, three hundred, five hundred.
And then it would take you, what, a million to get into his building? Million, million-two, it was an estimate from the, uh-
So we're talking a million-five, minimal.
Now, I, unfortunately, I have to throw a little wrinkle in. Uh, we have a meeting coming up. If one of, somebody brought to my attention that that EMA building was built with grant money.
It was, it was.
Okay.
I, I, yeah.
So, but point being, I need to talk to the prosecutor and make sure that it's-
Yeah.
What I would like to do, we can even do it. Um, it, um, I never thought of it, it didn't cross my mind, but now multiple, I don't know if, if people trying to stop the progress, but I have to invest again. So we'll be meeting either this week or next and we'll have ideas on that part.
Bill, you don't have any answer to that right now?
Uh, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, I, I don't. Um, I, that was a project, I think, back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen that we worked on. We did the contract review on it, but I don't, I don't believe that we ever were involved in the grant application or the grant agreement process. I'm not sure, to be honest, whether that was, um, Julie Green with the planning commissioner, who was maybe with the commissioners around that time also, but we're gonna have to try to find a copy of that grant agreement and probably then go through that to make sure what the rules, because again, some of these grants that you're, you know, required for so many years to make use of that building in that way, um, sometimes it's a longer term, sometimes it's a shorter term, we'll have to take a look at that because we don't wanna risk that. Um, while I have the microphone and nobody can stop me, I'll also bring up one more thing. Just to keep it in line with the commissioners, whenever there's the talk about leasing a facility, the, uh, a lease is also subject to three oh seven point eight six, the competitive bidding statute. It's a little bit different than the, than the traditional competitive bidding, but there's a section that addresses lease, uh, for county office and, and county use and it's a, a little bit of an abbreviated procedure, but you still do have to have some advertising and some, uh, some accepting of quotes. So if we go down a leasing path, I just want the commissioners to be aware of that too, we'll certainly help walk through that with you, but I just wanted you to be aware.
Good point, thank you, good point.
So to sort of clarify with me, again, do when I like to move out there, yes. They'll give me more room, more space and more parking, all of that. I'm willing to work with whatever this board needs. I will do, I promise you, I will do everything I can to get every goal, but I'm not gonna guarantee, I, because I can't.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
So the problem with that option is, we seem to be stuck on, we get the grant and we get the money, then we would remodel two buildings, but then there's the big if and that keeps delaying our decision, delaying our decision and who knows when we're gonna get the decision on the grant. I can't be out in this garage for a couple of years, I mean, we're already gonna have trouble in the summer, we're already past that. At some point, we have to say, we need to make some kinda decision here and go with it. I don't know that remodeling two buildings is better than just putting up a building behind the EMA building on a slab, a smaller structure with just the square footage that we need instead of retrofitting us into something and just getting the project rolling. I mean, at what point do we wait for this grant and, and all the remodel work?
I think the benefit of that is, we do have a building that's falling into disrepair at the fairgrounds, the old fire station and if we could save a building, refurbish a building rather than building another building and having another county building on the turns and everything else, and if John wants to go out there and it does make sense, especially located for his hazmat and for his, his EMA equipment and everything that he has there, um, we could find a win-win, that's, that's what I'm looking for. We know Chestnut, we looked at that, that was the original place, we wanted to do the old health department and it came in at like two point two million, I think, to retool that building and it was multi floors, it just didn't even make sense to me when I went and looked at the architectural drawings that, you know, why would you be doing autopsies and then have all your employees working upstairs above you and the way you had to have ventilation and have lifts just to get the bodies up and it, it just doesn't make sense.
So let me ask you this, if there's no grant and the county's gonna foot both remodals, does that project go forward, yes or no?
Well, it, it has to go forward, I don't think we have an option because we can't have you in a garage.
The remodel versus the new build, if there's no grant, do we still remodel two buildings or do we build one? Because the probability of the grant is the big question and we're not gonna have that for, who knows, a year or two.
I think what we were looking at is if we build a building, we're looking at one, five minimum, back maybe up to that two million mark. If we retool a building that's already there, I think we're saving a lot of money off the costs.
So therefore then, can we restart the project? Our decision is to retool two buildings?
It's all about the money, it's all about the money.
Well, here's, here's the problem, Doc, I mean, we got, we have your problem, we have nine-one-one problems and we have the Dogtown problem, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's their problem.
Right, I get it.
And, and, and the problem is, we don't have the money. So we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna borrow for all three, we're gonna borrow for one, we're gonna borrow for two, and we're not gonna borrow for anybody.
I have a question to the auditor and I haven't asked Sam Leon Kusso this.
And, and I get where you're coming, I mean, you need to have an answer, I understand that.
Yeah, that's the problem, we, we've been talking since last summer.
Right.
I know.
We have a hundred and eighty-five million in investments. Wait a second, but hear me out. Can the county-
No.
-take a loan? Take a loan on the investment?
I don't know that, I mean, it, there's only so much you can take a loan, I mean, there's only so much a county can take loans for, period. And that's almost more of a Danzo question than a Martha question, to be honest with you. Can we, are we allowed to do that?
Bill? We have a hundred and eighty-five million dollars invested, county money. Would I like to know, can we borrow against that money and repay that to the county?
Can we, can we, you mean bu, borrow that money from the county?
Well-
Cause you're not, that's two different things, all right? Um, when we get, uh, and I'm gonna let Chrissy talk, cause I think she's got something to say, but I'll have something to say after that, go ahead.
I was just wanting to say, the amount that-
Name is Chrissy.
Name?
Chrissy, Cisterick Auditor's Office. I was just gonna say that the report that you get with the investment money, that's not all general sum money, that money belongs to, um, very specific revenue funds, um, a, a good portion of that belongs to Board of D V, it's not even related commissioners' money. There's A S B, C F B money, uh, there's grant money, all included in that, it's, it's kind of other departments' money that we actually get the interest on.
Are you saying like borrow from ourselves instead of borrowing from a bank? Is that, is that what the philosophy is?
That's, that's not borrowing against something. Borrowing against something is using something as collateral and bar- and borrowing it from a third party. But you're saying borrow it from ourselves. And I, that's more of a Danzo question, but I do know that we are not allowed to spend that money. So, and we kind of went into that a little bit when it came to the Stewart situation because it came up with that. I know, I know you cannot give a legal advice on the, on the, in the meeting, but-
One thing that I would, I guess I would say, while our auditors folks are here too, is it's my understanding that, that that really isn't just a pool of money that we have kind of saved for a rainy day.
No.
And I want to, I want to make sure that, that if I'm correct in that at least, that, that people listening in know that too. That, that money represents, again, all these pots of money from different sources and with different potential restrictions that are sort of, and it's broken down into active and inactive deposits. But a lot of this is money that actually is, is what you guys are talking about budgeting for this upcoming year as well, that these are not, this isn't just a, a pool of money out there. So I think that's the first thing.
Correct. Some, some of the, some of the interest, and we talk about interest and I don't want to get into it today. It's more of what we're gonna kind of discuss with you guys a little bit tomorrow so you understand where our money comes from and where our sources are for our revenue. But, um, we, we rely on the interest from those investments for our budget because it goes to the general fund. So if you're borrowing money out of that, you're depriving us of the interest of that. So that's part of it. Another part of this, when we talk about money that's in that pot, is our ARPA money is also in that pot. And as we spend down that money, we have that money obligated for ARPA, but we don't have it all spent, right? So as we start to spend it on those projects, that's gonna be less of a pool already for the interest. So it's, I don't see it off the top of my head as a very viable option. We'll just say that.
And then I also want to say too, from, from a legal perspective, generally, what the county has done in the past is we've gone through bond council for, for those bonds, things like that, rather than trying to leverage our own money. And, and there's a, in fact, I think that's, the renewals on the agenda for this week. We also do have a county financial advisor that advises on the best revenue streams that we can use for these kind of things. So certainly from a legal perspective, I'm glad to help out with it. But I think that it may be a conversation that you guys would want to bring in our financial advisor on too because depending on what's going on with the general financial market the way it is, there may be better or worse ways for the county to leverage its money or to borrow the appropriate amount of money to do these kind of projects. And again, I think that that firm is much more versed in the financial end of it than I am.
Well, we only have a couple of choices. We're either gonna have to borrow the money. We have no other options. We have a coroner here that's asking a question. What are we gonna do?
And Martha, you're the Trump County Auditor. I also want to remember, remind you that if, if borrowing additional money, you have to service that debt and that money comes from our general fund. So I want you guys to understand that.
What, what do we have out there right now that we're still paying on?
Well, we've given you that information several times.
I haven't. I don't have that in front of me.
But I, we can provide that. I don't have that off the top of my head.
You can get a couple of dollars.
But that's, that's just notes. We also have bonds that we have out there too that we're paying on. But we're paying, our servicing that debt, all of our debt is about, what, 1.8 million? Is that correct? Off the top of your head. The servicing, the debt, the money that we take out of sales tax as off the top and use it for the debt payments. That's about 1.8.
That's where I think she's gotten the 2 million in this year. She's gonna get debt for 2025, it's gonna be about 2 million dollars. That's our, uh, bonds that we have and the windows.
Christie, could you announce your name, please? Because you know, if we don't, we're in trouble.
Christie, Susarek, Auditor's Office. So about 2 million dollars to service the debt for 2025. That's the debt, the, the bonds that we have outstanding and that's the principal interest for 2025. And then also our, uh, March issuance of the interest and, um, uh, rollers.
So we have a million dollars out there in debt at the moment.
No.
Two million.
That's what we service. That's, that's the money to service the debt, not the total debt. Servicing the debt, paying for the principal, paying for the interest that we have to pay. Our payments are 2 million dollars.
When will those be finalized? When will they be paid off?
We have quite some time.
That's various, with various debts.
Well, the 2 million dollars, the debt service payments for 2025, we have done this due, uh, March, June, and December.
No, he's asking when the, the different, the various bonds and notes are paid off. That's, that's a schedule.
Oh, yeah.
And we can get that to you and we, and if you want us to bring that tomorrow, we will.
Yes.
We did provide that as part of the general fund, uh, packet.
Yeah.
There was the, um-
You have that, but we'll give it to you again.
The amount for servicing 2025, the debt and principal, and then the overall debt for the entire county.
So I just want to make sure, Christie, that the board understands.
Hello.
Alex Stephen Johnson, Department of Homeland Security.
Alex.
I just, again, Alex.
He just said it.
Oh, I didn't.
Alex Stephen Johnson, Department of Homeland Security. For our commissioners, it's really important, especially going into tomorrow. You had your rollup of what you're anticipating to what Martha and Christie just said, but I'm gonna try to put it in layman's terms only because, you know, there's sometimes just a, we gotta kind of put it in layman's terms. But, so you had your rollup of what was available, uh, which last year was roughly 71. This year was already off the top-ish. I'm just, don't quote me, Ray. Um, this year, off the top, you have to deduct that 2 million right off the top, right? That's what Christie showed you guys and Martha on your breakdown. That 2 million dollars of debt rolled up collectively comes right off the top of what's available to spend for us in 2025. So what they're trying to say is essentially, if you continue to incur debt, which I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, that's your choice. If you continue to incur that debt, you can anticipate for the next year, for 2026's budget, that you're gonna be, that 2 million may very well be 5 million off your top line. And then so on and so forth, okay? Uh, we also have a lot of buildings. I highly encourage you to look at your MAXIMUS report. We have a lot of buildings that we're still paying on, 50-year, 20-year, so on and so forth. Those reports are extremely important. I just went through it, 207 pages. It's not fun. But it gives you a really good look at what you're still currently paying debt on, um, how long that, you know, bond or note is. Uh, all of those things are definitely, uh, things that we need to, and I can bring that in tomorrow soon. We can look at that a little bit more depth. But there are still buildings that we're paying on. And that's a good question because I think what we need to look at is, what do you have in inventory currently, right? What does Trump County have in inventory that we're paying on? And if we're paying on it, why aren't we using it? I don't know. That's a board of commissioners decision. Why are we incurring more and more and more and more and more? I don't know.
Commissioner?
Here's my suggestion. Let's get through the budget. Let's get the budget set. Once we tackle the budget, then, then I think we have to sit down and make these hard decisions, okay? Coroner's certainly one of them. 911's one of, a dog town. And like she said, we have all these buildings out there that we're paying on. Some of them just are getting tore down, you know? I, I mean, we need to look at all of that.
Right.
And, and you and I, we don't have, we don't have all the information. We're gonna get all the information, but let's stick with the budget. And, and Doc, you know what? I understand where you're at and I agree with you. Something needs to be done and, uh, but we have to get through the budget first. And then once we get through the budget, then we can look and see. But, um, I'm glad you've been as, as impatient, impatient as you've been because-
It's a hard decision. I, 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 I agree with you.
I know, and-
At some point, we're gonna have to progress.
Yeah, I, I get, I get to commend you again. I did last year, but I get to commend you again. I saw the working conditions you worked in before. I see the working conditions you work in now. And honest to God, like, I don't know how you're not in here screaming every single week for us to do something. You, you're mild-mannered. You're just taking it with a grain of salt. You're not, you know? If I was in your position right now, I would be screaming at whoever the power was saying, "Give me a damn building. Give me a good place to work because my guys are gonna walk or they're not gonna work in these conditions anymore." You're a special type of person to not do that because I wouldn't work a day in the conditions that we've had you work in for the last 10 years.
Too much surgeon years, I wasn't very pleasant, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Doc. Thanks.
Be patient. Be patient. We'll get it together.
Thank you. I'm gonna use my old thing. They kicked that can down the road too long.
Yeah, right.
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner, do we have anybody else up here? Nothing. Uh, we're gonna go through some of the agenda items first, sir, and then we'll get to you. Uh, we gotta start this agenda. Um, item number one, dispense the meat, reading of the minutes, the work session on January 28. Two, dispense reading and special meeting on January 29. Uh, here's something special. Adopt the resolution honoring Melissa Baker on her historic appointment to the Trump County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And then we will, uh, presentation of a resolution. Uh, we brought that up last week. This young lady has come up through that program and, uh, it was exciting to see her, um, appointment to the board. Four, we'll approve the bills. Martha, is this?
Well, it is, it's mine. Uh, this is, uh, authorizing payment. We're gonna have to change the numbers on this.
I'm gonna say your name, Martha.
I'm sorry. Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor.
I'm like you.
The, uh, Sheriff Wilson attended training prior to taking office. Because it was prior to taking office, we can't do that as payroll. But there is an O R C code, and I'll let Mr. Danzo address the legal part of this. But there's an O R C code that authorizes him to be paid, um, if the commissioners approve it. What we did is we originally took, um, his, his full salary, divided it by the number of hours in a year, and then we multiplied that by the training hours. However, due to a, a little quirk in the law and being reimbursed by the state for his salary, we had to take the, only the county part, portion of the salary and divide that. And so we have some different numbers. The, the overall difference is, instead of 49, 12, 50, it's 43, 60, 66, 5. I've already gone over this with Mr. Manning, um, rather than Ms., uh, Sheriff Wilson because I wasn't able to talk to him. So they, he's aware of, of it. Mr. Danzo, would you like to comment any further, explain a little bit about the legal part of it?
Sure. Commissioner Phil Danzo, County Prosecutor's Office. Auditor Yoder was absolutely correct in how this is generally structured. With the approval of the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff is entitled to pay for the mandatory training that he needs to take before he enters office. And that's different than most other elected officials because most are permitted to take their training after coming into office. The, the, just clarifying about the, the reason for the amount. One-eighth of the sheriff's salary is reimbursed by the State of Ohio. They have, what I now come to learn, traditionally done that. The State of Ohio does pay that share every year. CCAO guidance on this particular payment, because it's, it's before the sheriff's term of office, is that unless the state separately agrees to pay the one-eighth of this, then the commissioners are only able to approve the county share. So that is the reduction of the one-eighth. If the State of Ohio would certify those funds available separately from the salary distribution that they give every year, the commissioners could approve that higher amount. But it sounds like the state is not doing that at this point. So, uh, that's just why that difference is there. Again, that's all based on the statute and the CCAO guidance on how to process it through the Board of Commissioners.
Question. So, so we don't, we don't have to pay mileage and per diem on top of it for being out of town?
I don't believe it. That wasn't brought to us.
I think you do, but I'm not sure.
But I don't think it has to go through the commissioners, correct?
I, I'm not sure.
Name, state's name. I'll give his name.
Mark Van Shire's Office.
So that'll be like a paycheck, then taxable income? Or have to take taxes off?
No, it's, it's paid through A.P. It's paid through accounts payable. Because of the way the statute is on salary, it's, it's, it's an amount equal to this, but it's through A.P., through accounts payable. And again, although the action came at our recommendation, we, we wrote this on behalf of the sheriff's office, uh, just because there's an inexperience there as far as writing things and we wanted to help them get it through.
Yeah. So it's, so we're just proving this or whatever, but he said it's tax-free and then any reimbursement for mileage and meals comes out of somewhere else?
We're not, yeah, that's someplace else. It's, it's, go ahead, a second.
Yeah, I, I, Bill Danzo, County Prosecutor's Office. Uh, the statute, the statute doesn't specifically address the mileage and, uh, and meal reimbursements or anything like that. It talks about the sheriff at his rate of pay, essentially.
Right.
There's very, very little legal authority out there on this point, other than the statute itself. So one thing the commissioners might want to consider is reaching out to the CCAO to find out how other counties handle this. At least, you know, when it comes down time for audits and things like that, it's like a little bit of a, a safety in numbers concept as long as you guys are following along with what other counties do in similar situations. But as far as, you know, the tax consequences and things like that, it's not, it's not gonna be entered as payroll for the sheriff, but there still would be whatever tax consequences would come out of that payment.
But not on, not on our end of thing as far as withholding. I think it's what, Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor, is I think what Commissioner Malloy was alluding to. He would, it wouldn't necessarily be tax-free. That's something Sheriff Wilson would have to deal with, with his own tax professional.
Okay. So, we want to reach out to CCAO?
So, and that's, that's, the, the other part of that would be, it would be a separate issue from what we're asking you to do tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
This would be, this would be, it's separate. It's, it's, as far as any other compensation, as far as reimbursement for his, his meals, et cetera, per diem, whatever, that's a separate issue from what we're trying to cover statutorily here.
Okay.
All right?
Yep. You wanna go to six, or do you want me?
I'm gonna have, uh, Commissioner, or I'm sorry, I'm gonna have Christie, Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor. We're gonna have, uh, Christie from my office explain this and go through it very quickly.
Uh, Christie, Susarek, Auditor's Office. M.A.S. Financial Advisory Services LLC is the county's financial advisor with regard to our debt transactions, as Attorney Danzo alluded to just a little bit ago. The contract has a detailed list of all the activities that M.A.S. may perform. Here's just a brief overview of what they've been working on for the county recently. Uh, they serve as our independent registered municipal advisor as it pertains to issuance of municipal securities. They're assisting the Auditor's Office with applying for and corresponding with the Treasury of State's Office for their OMAP rating program, which is a less expensive and more efficient option than getting a rating from one of the bond rating services. They are working in tandem with our bond counsel and underwriter to make sure that the county's note or bond issuances are done timely and properly. They answer questions about note and bond issuances. They update us on new requirements. And they assist us with recording all the fees associated with the note and bond issuances as they get kind of complicated. And then their contract is for 8,000 dollars, but they generally get paid through the debt issuance costs when the county issues notes and bonds. So for example, our contract was 8,000 dollars, but we had a debt issuance in March that those fees for that, uh, note issuance cover the 8,000 dollars so we didn't actually have to pay them out of the county fund. Uh, we're expecting the same thing this year because we do have another, uh, note issuance in March of this year. And those fees should cover the 8,000 dollars.
Is this a managed account? Do they get paid by the account value year-end for? How do they get paid?
Just a flat fee is 8,000 dollars. And then like I said, if we did not have a bond issuance that year, we would be responsible for paying them the 8,000 dollars. But if we have a bond or note issuance, let me say that. Um, if we have a bond or note issuance, they get paid through the fees and then we don't have to pay them anything in, in addition to that.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you, Christie. Okay. Seven, adopt the resolution congratulating Trump County Family and Children First Council on their 30th anniversary. On February 9, 1995, Trump County Commissioners created the Trump County Family and Children First Council to provide a venue for both family and child-serving providers. Board of Commissioners joined others in congratulating Director Bonnie Wilson and the staff on their continued success. And then we have a presentation of a resolution, uh, for, uh, Ms. Wilson. They do a great job there. Bonnie does. We just had the Doc lead. Enter an agreement by, and between the Board of Trump County Commissioners, Trump County, Ohio, Mercy Health, Youngstown, St. Elizabeth Hospital, uh, place of business at 1044 Belmont Avenue in Youngstown. Mercy for blood cultures. These services are required by the coroner's office. Replace services formerly provided by Stewart Health. These are blood cultures. I don't know anything of these, but Doc Wood, he's gone. Number nine, proof change orders, number one. Does anybody hear from the, uh, engineers office? Oh, here. You wanna go through these, Gary?
I don't know what I can-
Yes.
Great shape for Trump County Engineering Office. Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, this is for the Larchmont Avenue resurfacing project that, uh, we still got some stripey to do on that. It was resurfaced last year. Uh, change order number one was, um, some additional quantities with the expansion joint at the bridge there. And then number two is just to deduct some items non-performing. Quantities came in lower than contract. We did come in under budget on that project. Go on to the others if you want.
Yes.
Term number 11 are just, um, standard permits that have been issued. I don't know if you've got any questions. I know. Number 12, um, the new commissioners onboard. Every year we assess the roads at this time, just based on how bad the winter's been. Last two years, we have not enacted the frost laws. That's where we do not issue overweight permits. Uh, this year with the, the heavy freezes that we've had, uh, the frost got- This year with the heavy freezes that we've had, the frost line got down there pretty deep, so we are gonna enact those frost laws, and that just protects the roads from getting broken out. A lot more susceptible if it starts to thaw out by the end of the year. And we'll continue to watch it. We may lift it before April thirtieth, but right now we're gonna do it until April thirtieth. If any heavy moves are necessary, we're gonna assess them case by case. If you gotta go down to a, you know, Larchmont, you know, into the industrial area, obviously we're not gonna hold that out. Our more rural roads are definitely a lot more susceptible to damage. I'll use more on that one. Then number thirteen, too, that's a good one to point out. Weatherfield Township, we wrote a grant for them to receive federal funds for federal highway in Eastgate, regional council of governments to resurface county line and well roads. So we'll take a federal funds for a township road, it's on the federal aid system. We're gonna run it through our LPA local app program. So we do the design, and we administer that through our local LPA program and save the township, all the design funds and administration costs. But we have to take responsibility to meet this federal requirement, so that's what this is here. We're gonna bid this out. We do have an MOU with the township, so they're gonna incur all the costs that are above the grant amounts. Any questions, I know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody's here from the planning commission?
Yes, she's right behind you.
Good morning. Nick Hoggins from the Trumbull County Planning Commission. So item number fourteen is for the Taxation and Review Council. This is something that is required by a higher revised code that we put together a council to review all active abatements that includes enterprises, tax, community financing, community investment. Part of putting together that Taxation and Review Council, the commissioners have to appoint three residents from Trumbull County that will look over these. In previous years, last year, we had two representatives from unions and Commissioner Malloy. The three years before that, we had the three commissioners appointed themselves. Prior to that, we had members of the planning commission. The revised code only states that it needs to be a resident of Trumbull County. There's no other requirements to that, but they would need to meet on the date that the auditor is the chairperson of the Taxation and Review Council per a higher revised code. That date is set. But we just need three residents of Trumbull County. They will go over every active abatement we have and take a vote to either continue, expire, modify, or revoke existing abatements. And then once that meeting is done, the commissioners will also ratify that. So appointing yourselves, you will still get that information if you do not appoint yourselves. So as long as they are residents of Trumbull County for the Taxation and Review Council.
So with this, do we pass this tomorrow and then provide the names at a later date and do them all, or are you looking for the three names for tomorrow?
I, you could, I guess you could do it however you would like, but preferably we would like to know sooner than later. That way we can make sure that they're able to attend the meeting, get them any information that we get. You know, we do have to gather information from all businesses that have abatements. We have to verify that, and then we pass out that information. So if you wanted to appoint somebody at a later date, that's as long as it is before the meeting date that's set, then they're able to attend that meeting date, so that we can verify we have the form.
Have you reached out to Nancy and Mark about the reappointment?
No, I haven't.
Are you happy with their appointment?
Yeah, I have no problem with them. Representatives of the union are very, unions are very interested in any time of business case of abatement, so having them or any other representative from the union, I think, is in good faith. It allows them to have a watchdog, for lack of a better term, looking over the abatements. And I don't believe that in Trumbull County, we do anything that is not above board, so we're not worried about having them be the watchdog. I think it's good on both ends.
And they both, if I recall, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, they both attended last year.
Yeah.
And so that was, and I don't think they commented much during it, but I think they, on our end, it seemed to go well.
I mean, I have no problem.
No. I mean, you have a problem?
Are you on that? I was last year. I'll do it again if you want me to, or if you want to do it, that's fine, too.
I mean, they already know about it. You know it better than anybody. Yeah, then stay on it with the other two. Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, so let's just name the three over again, and if there's, someone reach out to Nancy and Mark tonight just to make sure before we vote tomorrow.
Yeah, as long as they're willing.
I can reach out to them. I've got contact information. And then the next item is also mine, item number fifteen. That's just to accept a maintenance bond from a maintenance bond company for TK Escavating. That is a company that did the work for the Townsend Rainage improvements in Liberty Township. That was done with the first one for Shawshank Grant. That program is done. They've completed all the work, and this is standard, there's a two-year maintenance bond that covers their work for the next two years. This is just accepted.
Thank you, Nick. Sanitary engineer, Gary?
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. I think item seventeen should come before sixteen, Lisa.
Okay.
Seventeen is the public hearing for the Sheridan Drive Sewer Project. We scheduled that for March the twelfth at seven PM, and this one's gonna be in DeMathy's Elementary School, not the high school. Most recent one we had was out at the high school cafeteria. But Sheridan Drive, this is the old Baker Elementary School right at the end of Sheridan Drive, so the people can, the weather's good, can just walk to the public hearing. So anyway, that's been scheduled, which brings us up to then getting permission while having DeMathy's School covered under Corsa during, for the public hearing. I've worked with Alex on that in order to get them named a Corsa for the public hearing activities. Going down to number eighteen, this is our countywide service lateral assistance program, the SLAB. This is phase two. We've already gone out to bid for the second batch of house connections, and this is, let's see here, phase two for seven qualified ARP houses, and these are along Yankee Run Road in Brookfield Township. And seven of these are awarded to MJD Excavating, and then if you look at number nineteen, another five are going to be awarded to Express Underground. So eighteen and nineteen go hand in hand. They're both from the same bid opening, and one contractor got seven of the connections, the other got five. Going to number twenty, well, twenty and twenty-one, these go hand in hand also. This is the Meadowbrook Project. This is the Big Kahuna, the one we've been formulating and planning now for well over ten years. And it's time to go ahead and issue a notice to proceed and have them get started. And their notice to proceed date is for APL Horro to build a treatment plant. Their notice to proceed date is going to be February twenty-fourth, and it's an eighteen-month project, so we're looking at August twenty-fourth for the substantial completion date. Now, the collection system that is going to build the trunk lines for this project, that is the Woodford Excavating, that's item twenty-one, and their start date is also February twenty-fourth, and they're, it's a twelve-month construction period, and their deadline for substantial completion will be February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, was this part of that four million dollar grant that you were after?
No, sir, that one was last year's. We already got the four million for that one. That project finished first in the state for that principal forgiveness. So that one's, yeah, that's the Meadowbrook Project. So one that I brought.
So item twenty, you already have the money for?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Everything's set in place here.
Okay. And twenty-one?
Yes, that's the same thing.
Okay. So what you went down to Columbus last week for?
That's phase two.
Yeah, that's the Pendleton-Gilmer Project. That's the second phase of this Meadowbrook area.
So you already got the money for twenty and twenty-one?
Yes, yes. It's all in place, yes, sir.
And that's a grant, not a loan?
No, there's a loan portion to it. There is, we got an OPWC grant in there, we got an Appalachia grant, we have four million dollars of principal forgiveness, but the remainder of it is zero percent loan through Ohio EPA.
So my question is, was that the original way that you went after that, or did you have to switch gears?
No, that's the original plan, sir.
Okay.
And those loans, save it in the sanitary engineer, you budget that into your budget that doesn't come out of general funds or any of the bond stuff that we talked about earlier. This is your own department stuff.
Right. For the debts that the sanitary engineers take out, for the most part, we use capital charges and assessments to pay back those loans. There are, but there are instances like the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which were tens of millions of dollars, where we're not able to do that.
But the whole district, since you combined all the districts, so in reality, the whole district is indebted to this, right?
Yes.
So everybody in that, everybody, when you combined the districts a couple of years ago, so now they're, everybody in this district is on the hook for this loan.
Yes, sir. Well, that's a correct statement, but only the people in Meadowbrook are paying the capital charge to retire that loan.
I understand that. But if something goes sour, then everybody in the district has to pay for that, right?
It would be a liability of the district itself if the payments aren't made properly.
Of the whole department, because even when the districts were separated, the whole department would still be responsible, wouldn't it be?
No. It's that district.
Right.
Since you combined all the districts, now all the districts are responsible if something would go sour with that.
Right. And just like the people in the prior metropolitan district are responsible for the debt on the Mosquito Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
I understand it, but it wasn't that way until we combined all the districts, all right?
There were only two districts, the Mosquito Creek and the metropolitan were the only two sewer districts.
What about the seven or eight or nine that you combined?
Those are water districts, sir.
Oh, those are all yours, so you just combined the two?
Yeah, we only had two sewer districts.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. Number twenty-two, adopt the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County to enter, on journal the filing, the petition for an annexation to annex seven point nine five six one acres of land, parcel two eight five two 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 zero zero, also known as address three nine four two Youngstown Road, that's on State Route forty-two, in Howland Township to the city of Warren, Trumbull County, Ohio. This is for a life storage building, I'm sure everybody has seen. This has been going around, and I had some phone calls on this. Commissioner, you know anything about?
They've entered it, they've withdrawn it three times?
Four.
Four times already?
Yeah.
Where they put in, then they realized they did something wrong, or they weren't doing it right, so they withdrew it, then they went in again, and they withdrew it within, withdrew it. So it's been bouncing back and forth, so now it looks like they are filing a petition again.
Hopefully, everything's in order.
And does Howland have anything to say about this? I mean, I don't know.
It's based on the type of annexation, and I don't see that listed. I'm sorry, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, it's based on the type of annexation, too, and I don't see that listed. Do we know the type?
I believe it's expedited type, too.
Commissioner Phil Dantso, Prosecutor's Office, we will help, we certainly will help your office figure out, you know, what type. A lot of times, the people who petition for these annexations don't include the specific type of annexation in the paperwork, so we have to sort of work through that and figure it out. The question about whether Howland's involved, if it does depend, as the auditor said, whether, what type of annexation is, some are filed in a way where it's more of an adversarial proceeding, some are filed in such a way where the petitioner will then notify the township, and they try to come to an agreement before any sort of hearing or proceeding. Sometimes they come in with a pre-arranged agreement with the township, so this one, we'll take a look. Because it's been filed so many times, so I want to make sure that it's filed the same way, or, you know, figure out exactly how it's been filed, and I'll work with Lisa on that, if that's okay with the Board of Commissioners doing that.
Okay, thank you. I had calls from the councilman, White, and Warren over there that's just asking a bunch of questions on this, so I guess we'll wait to see how it pans out.
While we're talking about that, Mr. Chairman, I get a letter, probably been four months ago, from Newton Falls Law Director, and it was a letter telling us that they intending, they're intending on annexing part of Braceville, where Dunkin' Donuts is, the new Dunkin' Donuts they just built, but I've seen nothing come through our office in regards to that. That's Mr. Gruszkas here. I was wondering if you can speak to that at all? Have you been notified in Braceville?
They haven't been notified.
Yeah, it was just weird, because it was a letter from their law director. It said, we're, this is intent that we're gonna annex this property, and it had the map number, parcel number, future business, and it's the Dunkin' Donuts site there. Said that they were in cooperation with Braceville Township to annex that into Newton Falls Village, and then nothing again. So I don't know if they knew what they were doing with that, or if that was just something they intended on doing and didn't do it, but if anyone from Newton Falls is listening, is their law director, they need to, that letter doesn't suffice, apparently, to just do that, and especially if Braceville doesn't even know about it. I'm a little curious about that.
We didn't seem to receive a letter if there was something for anything.
Thank you. Okay. Beth, you have something to add to this one?
No, I just sent out an email for the Ohio, Beth Farmill, Trumbull County Tourism. We just sent out an email this morning in cooperation with Trumbull County Historical Society. At the end of the month, we are hosting a two fifty meeting. We're inviting community historical societies, anybody that's interested in talking about tentative or, and/or confirmed events. We're starting to add those to a calendar, website. The Historical Society has their plans, so we'll talk about that at that meeting. Visitor guide is coming out this beginning of March, and last week, we hosted a travel writer from The Plain Dealer, and she's looking to do an article on the Medici and the Museum of Science Fiction and Fantasy Art exhibit that just opened a couple weeks ago at the Medici, and an article on Past Time Arcade. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Commissioners are included in this year's visitor guide again, right?
Yes. Boy, did I have to work hard for those photos, though.
Well, those were taken at the fairground.
They were taken at the fairground, yes, and they look very good, actually.
And it was raining that day, I remember.
These guys look very handsome.
Oh, okay. Have you been receiving calls for those that want to? I've been getting emails about those wanting to be involved in the county for the two fifty, and I directed them to you.
Please, yes, please send them, certainly the people that were here a couple of weeks ago, I have them on a list. Our list right now is over a hundred and thirty people throughout Columbus.
Okay.
So we've included the county association, we've included key people here at the county offices, historical people, people that I've been speaking with in terms of, like, Mooney Valley Scrappers, who does a Fourth of July event, the City of Nile. So we were trying to be as inclusive as possible. That doesn't mean I got everybody, but if there's anybody that's interested, please send or contact me at Trumbull County Tourism. We'll take their contact information, add them to our email list, and then anybody is invited to attend. We expect about fifty out of a hundred and fifty, and it's going to be at the Ag Center in Portland.
Okay.
It's five thirty, we're trying to do it after hours, so the people that may have day jobs can make it as well, so. But if we answer any questions, and even if people just want to come and hear what some of those plans are starting with, we're happy to be there.
Thank you. This is a pretty long one. I'll turn this over to our transportation director, Mike Selma.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Mike Selma, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. I've got twenty-
Thank you, Mr. Sir, Mike Salama, Trumbull County Transit Administrator, I've got twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Yes.
I'll handle all three, hopefully. Uh, twenty-four is to award the purchase transportation, uh, for, um, for the three-year contract, it'll start March first, run for three years, and there's one-year extension. Um, just wanted to let you know that, um, I've been working with ODOT, uh, since May of last year, the reason I'm working with ODOT is because this is a fifty-three-ten grant, it goes through now, they have to okay everything, there's, it's a three-tier process, I've already completed first tier, second tier, uh, we're in the third tier, which is the contracts, and going from there with that part of it. Each tier, I also have to receive, uh, information to be able to move on. The other part I just want to talk about for a second is, um, I did send out, we sent out twenty people that were interested in this bid, we received ten back. I know, that's not, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up is, normally, I only send out so many, and I get four back, and that's it. And again, it's usually the original four that we have, so we got a good, a good response to this for the first time in, what, five years, Diane, keep your say? Something like that, I'm just, you know, that's why, that's why it's, that's the only reason. So anyways, I, out of the ten, I'm, we are, we are proposing to award five of the contracts, it would be Garwin Comfort Caravan, um, Garwin Comfort Caravan, All American USA Taxi, Sunset Transportation, and Country Neighbor. The other five that I, we are not recommending are Community Bus Service, Loving Hands, Jodel, Affordable, and Kind Transportation, and Transportation Net. So, um, do you have any questions at this point, or I mean, this is what we're proposing, and I did send a lot of information to the Commissioners, and I-
Yeah, you got packets of that stuff, did you bring the-
I brought packets, but I didn't make copies for everybody, because I'm not sure what you would like of them, I mean, I did make, here's what I did do. Okay, I only have three copies here, so-
Do you need me to make some more?
Can you, yeah, can we stop for a second, I'll make a couple more of these?
Sure.
Can I do one?
Yeah.
If I could say some, uh, I'm Carl Fleming, uh, Longtown Advocate for, is that on Trumbull County, uh, Transit Board, and I just wanted to say that, uh, since the board was disbanded, and, uh, we've come through, uh, a, a change, uh, a change, a change? My mouth ain't big enough? But, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, I actually do something that a lot of people in this room don't do with it, I ride the system, and I have ridden it since, uh, since I quit, um, driving back in, uh, two thousand and eight or nine, um, seen a lot of changes and a lot of everything. At this point, and I, I pretty much communicate with everybody, there's a lot of information going around, we have two new Commissioners that aren't, uh, up to speed on anything quite now, but they're, they're gonna have to get up to it, and, uh, Commissioner Beloy has, he got into it, uh, for a couple of years, but we actually are getting very few complaints, way, way less than we did before, and the contractors, uh, the four that we have, and Sunset is the only one that has not been involved, but, um, they are actually working very well together, um, we are coming in way under what we came onto, uh, under for the Transit Board, um, and no disrespect, that was then, this is now, but these, these contractors are getting very few complaints, and they are actually working well together, and I, I just, I gotta, some people don't think, uh, Michael and Diane are, they're doing a very good job trying to keep this thing going, uh, if anybody thinks Michael Salamoni is, uh, making too much money, or, uh, not doing his job, we need an administrator by statute of the FTA and ODOT if we are gonna do anything with federal or state funds, so, and they will not recognize the board, uh, as smart as Bill Dantso is, unless he's gonna become the administrator, um, he will not be recognized by the FTA for, for the funding mechanism. So, right now, we have done a pretty good job, I think we could do a little bit better with, uh, we need to always come up with ways to fund it, a dedicated funding source has, has been on the table for years, um, I, I don't know the exact way to go to approach it, that will be up to you three to, to see what direction, or maybe even go to the, the people of the county, um, I've spoken to Bill Dantso about the RT, uh, creating an RTA or whatever, you guys got your hands full, a lot of things, I don't have all the answers, but I will say that right now, my cap team and the people that are riding the system are actually very happy with the system as it is right now, so take that for what that's worth, and any information that you guys have, uh, you guys all, I talked to all three of you, you guys have my number, I would be willing to answer any questions that you might have that would help you guys make a better decision, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody has my recommendations, so I'll just go through this, and then if you have any questions, please, stick them there. So basically, uh, the first four vendors on here, we've been working with them for well over three to four years, I mean, we've had these contracts for at least three years, I was working with them separately, and then Diana was with them separately for a couple of years, so we've been working, actually, with these four contracts for possibly four to five years, since the dissolving, which was the twenty-twenty of the Trumbull County Transit Board. So, regarding Comfort Van, Comfort Caravan, one of the, here's, there's four reasons, um, why we're choosing that.
Mike, do you have, before you get to that?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of the questions you asked, or the scoring sheets? I asked you to put the scoring sheets-
I have.
-next to each other, side by side, so we can see-
I did, I did that on an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
If you want that, we have to get it made, because I didn't bring enough for everybody, but here's, I've got a packet right here, it's gonna take a while to make everything, but-
Continue, Mike.
All right, thank you. Uh, so anyways, and I actually have the scoring sheets, too, these are the signed scoring sheets, Commissioner wants to, okay, I don't, that I'd sent out to you.
Right.
Okay, so, going, starting with Comfort Caravan, um, in regards to their, uh, dollars that they're charging, their first year was actually less than what they're doing right now, the second year's the same, and the third year's a little higher, uh, they also have twenty vehicles in their fleet, fifteen are wheelchair accessible, so that's why they scored the highest of ninety-five. Garwin is next, um, again, their increase was slightly higher, and they have sixteen vehicles, non-wheelchair. Sunset has thirty-five vehicles, seven wheelchair, the rates are per mile only, there's no minimum, like the other ones, and, um, they have, uh, I believe, oh, they have seven wheelchair vehicles. Okay, I know what it is, and four of them are electric, and the other three are, uh, with a ramp of vehicles, so-
Is that, or they have a G-?
They're out of Ashtabula.
Ashtabula, okay.
Yeah. Uh, Country Neighbor, again, we've been working with, they have thirteen vehicles in their fleet, nine of them are wheelchair accessible, their rates did increase, however, uh, their quote that they've always done is total miles, not revenue miles, and she always tells us why she does that, and on top of it, they only cover the northern tier. So these are the five, I'm, like, an AA USA Taxi, uh, they did not raise their rates for three years, they kept the rates the same for the next three years. Uh, they do have sixteen vehicles in the fleet, none are wheelchair, however, all sixteen vehicles are ten years older. Why that's important is, in the RFP, they can have vehicles that are over ten years old, however, I'm gonna have to come back to the Commissioners and you have to okay it, but if you okay this contract, I'll come back next week to okay the, then you okay the vehicle. So moving on to the ones that we did-
My only question is on Sunset, and they're out asked to do it, so are we presently under contract with them now?
We are not under contract with them at this point, they're the only one we're under contract with.
So is that gonna be a problem of them getting down here to service us?
I've talked to them, and they said that's not gonna be a problem.
Well, I, I know they're not gonna say it's gonna be a problem, but do you think it's gonna be a problem?
They, they say they can, one of the questions I have, one, um, the very first thing is, can you do the entire county? They saying they can, they can do the entire county, so I have to go with what, you know, they put on their paperwork, and I did talk to them, so, and I, none of, no one's here from there at this point, but-
I, I mean, it just, I mean, that could be a problem, especially in the winter, you know, they, they get a lot more snow than we get, uh, I ju, I just see some potential problems there with them being out, outside of, of the county.
I mean, uh, Country Neighbor's outside is kind of the same way, they're in Ashtabula, and they cover the northern tier, so-
Yeah, but they're only, they're only going up north.
Right, they only cover to about around three oh six, if you ever take, uh, so-
And, and they're, and they're from Orwell also, they're-
Right, yeah, they're from Orwell, and the other one's on the other side, they, Sunset works with Country Neighbor already with contracts there, so they split the different areas, so the question would just be, I would like to at least try and see how they are, and if we only use them in the northern tier, likely use Country Neighbor, and that's what we do, but if we can bring them down here, because we have not had a lot of denials, but there's times where, um, we need tickets down here, and if they can do them down here, because it sounds like what they would like, they want, they're gonna bring a vehicle down here and keep it down, and just keep it running, in other words, whereas I think a lot of the other systems, because they have other contracts, they go between contracts with their vehicles, I got a feeling they're gonna keep one or two buses in this area, and those buses will be strictly our contract.
So what you're-
That's what I'm picking up on from that.
So what you're saying is, we're not gonna give them a set amount of trips?
No.
We're just gonna use them, and if it doesn't pan out?
Then we'll take it from there.
Okay, and, and, and we can do that, I mean, you don't have to use them for twenty trips, or-
No.
Or two hundred trips, it's all at-
Right, um-
Your discretion, right?
Correct, the way this program works is, none of the vendors are programmed for any trips specifically, I don't know how many, it's, and a lot of times, um, I give the customers the phone numbers, they just make the phone calls themselves, if they call one, and the idea is, if you call one, they're, um, they're not available, or the, you know, call the next one, call the next one, so hopefully we never have any denials, and we have had about, not a lot of denials, but we have had probably about twenty denials throughout the year, but-
Marcy, you're a Trumbull County auditor, but you're not saying that the folks didn't get a ride, they just got a denial-
No, no, no.
From the, from the initial one.
No, 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 they did not, they were denied, so what, see, part of the problem with the way the system is set up right now, they could be denied at USA, but get the truck, get in a Garwin, or they could be denied at USA and get it someplace else, or, you know, they go all the way down, so the only one I can really, and I hate to do this today, the only one I can really go with, because Dave, a Comfort Caravan, is the one I always use as a last resort, well, no, and you've had a few denials, about ten or, you, you did, sorry, David, but not a lot, they were in the morning, but that's where I usually would, if anybody would call me and said I've been denied, I would say, "Oh, Comfort Caravan," because nine times out of ten, ninety-nine percent of the time, they can get them in, um, the other thing was, anytime I would get a call and a client needs a ride within twenty-four hours, or forty-eight hours, I'm sorry, I would always have them call, because nine times out of ten, they would call, either Garwin or USA, and they were already booked, that time for you, so Dave was always been my Comfort Caravan. Okay, so, those are the five that I'm recommending. The ones I'm not recommending, Community Bus Service, they have nine older vehicles, and I believe their fleet, um, are all over ten years, but I could be wrong, uh, seven are non-wheelchair, two, oh, two are wheelchair, the two wheelchair are definitely over ten years old.
Mike, I get a question on that.
Okay.
Okay, you said they got-
They have na-
Nine older vehicles-
Yeah.
And two are wheelchair accessible.
Right.
You gave them a five. Triple H, or All American Taxi, you have all sixteen vehicles are ten years of older, and none are wheelchairs equipped, and you gave them a seven. How does that happen, when all of them in their fleet are older, and none of them are wheelchair accessible?
To be honest with you, I want to thank the Commissioners for letting me do this project, I'll tell you why. When I did that spreadsheet, I seen something else on there. Um, Sunset, we gave them a fifteen or something, we, I knocked up on how many points, they got thirty-five vehicles, why did we do that? I don't know why we did that, that was something our group did, but once I did this spreadsheet, I started seeing where maybe we could have given somebody one or two more points someplace else, like what you just brought up, Commissioner.
Right, and then I look at the same thing, I'm not, I'm not lobbying for any, anyone, just looking to fairness here.
Right.
You have, let's go back to that CBS again.
Right.
You have them as, uh, experience and qualifications, many requirements, you have them at fifteen.
Right.
But they ran the whole program for a dozen years, and I, I don't have the least experience out of all of them.
The experience and qualification, I gave them a form, everybody's got the same form.
Right.
As a board member, CBS also has a reputation, there were some things that they got pegged on by ODOT and the FTA, and-
Yeah, but-
Right, okay.
If that has nothing to do with this rating qualification, and we can't taint the rating of how we rated it now, based on that, there's not a rating for that.
One, two-
With all due respect.
Out of the twenty-two questions, there's one, two, three, four, five, six that they did not answer favorably. Can you do same-day scheduling? They said no. Comfort Caravan says yes, Garwin said maybe, all the other ones, uh, USA said yes, so there's no, next one, uh, the next one.
Can I just-
How many vehicles do you have in your-
When you said your past, there is five points for history of similar services provided, that's on the scorecard.
Mr. Merkin, could you give your name, please?
Oh, it's all right, I forget it, Dave Merkin, from Comfort Caravan.
Okay, so, um, I'm reading-
And I'm, and Mike, I'm just playing devil's advocate, because anyone you say no to, we're locking in these other companies for a three-year contract, and these no's-
Right.
I want to make sure if they protest it, contest it, we don't open ourselves up to discrimination that, well, they only picked five, why'd they pick five, why'd they pick six? You know, why did they cut us off, why are we first on the bubble? And then if they contest it, I don't want any-
Commissioner, here you go.
Any flack of lawsuit or anything back at us.
Give that to Commissioner, stop. So, uh, the next one I, the next question they did not answer was, how many trips you perform in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? We provided no trips for this program, that's not what I asked, I asked, how many trips did you do? They did not answer that question. Um, again, with your present fleet, how many trips could you add? We need to know how many, uh, trips, I'm sorry, uh, we need to know how many we, uh, need to serve at first. Again, I didn't ask that, my question is, are you gonna be able to grow, and can you take on any more trips? If you can't take on any more trips, and then the last question, are you able to transport clients out of state? They said no. Now, here's a question I don't know, is, is it because they don't want to, or they legally can't, because there are, depending on how you, um, register your vehicles, vehicles may not be able to go out of state, but again, they said no, everybody else said yes, so these are the several things, these are the reasons I knocked them down, was because of that.
Michael, were the rates for all the people that you accepted, were the rates actually in line with what we are doing right now at, at thirty-four, thirty-one per, uh, per-
Well, that was the other thing, too, their rate is also, um, second highest, you know, starting at sixty-five, and then Jodel was the highest, but their weight is way out, um- Let me wear my head on here. Yeah, so their rate is sixty-five, they're the, uh, second highest for a rate. And I can give you some numbers regarding that also. Loving Hands only has one vehicle, a non-wheelchair. Rates are competitive, but they only have one vehicle, and it's a non-wheelchair. Jodel is very high in rates, they have six vehicles, three wheelchairs, but they also, and again, this is something with Diane, they did not give us a portal, the portal forms, which is something that Diane's always requested, it's the financial forms. So they did not turn those in. Um, Affordable Kind, they were just missing a lot of information, the transit and that, it was an incomplete bid supplement. So, I mean, that's basically the reason I'm doing this, I'm, I'm recommending this, this group. So, um, right now, and I'll be giving this as another report, our present, uh, cost is thirty-four oh one, one-way trip. Community Bus Service is sixty-five dollars for a one-way trip. But basically, if we were to go with them at this point and use them for anything, their one-way trip is equivalent to our round trip. So that's the other, you know.
I would just second Commissioner Malloy's-
Yeah.
-concern about opening up, I mean, they did respond.
Right.
I understand some disparities, but I don't understand why if they responded, we wouldn't offer them- Service. Excuse me? And afford it?
Diane from Senior Levy.
Who?
Go ahead, sorry, sorry, go ahead. Okay. Um, I, I, I have an accounting background. So when I look at these, I look at the costs, I look at the number of trips that we've provided. Um, our history with Community Bus Service, probably had in the past, for the same dollar amount, we provided half the trips. We weren't able to meet capacity. Under Senior Levy with our other contracts, we like our vendors, we like our seniors to have choice of vendors, so that when, maybe if we have four or five vendors, maybe they don't get along well with the drivers from one company, but they like the drivers from another. Um, we like to have our, our seniors to have choice. But when you look at the cost of our programs, we cannot afford a seventy-dollar one-way trip within the funding that we- When, when I look at the local match, the gross amount of our trips, right now, the amount of money that I am committing to transportation, we are needing that with our vendors that are only costing us the thirty-five dollars gross cost trip. When you back off the grants that we're getting this past year, we only pay twenty-one dollars per trip, with that's grant dollars. That'll go up if we're paying seventy dollars a trip, as opposed to seventy dollars for round trips. We won't be able to meet the cost at a seventy-dollar trip. Any questions? On the financial side?
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, Commissioners, I also have something else for you. It's history, we need to have some history, not, not repeat. Okay, these are the numbers that I put together, the, Commissioners, I actually put this together back in twenty-twenty. I, I just didn't do, didn't do this today. Um, these are numbers from the Trombone County Transit Board. It's how many trips that Community Bus Service, because they were the one running at the time, how many trips they did, their cost, and the average cost per trip. If you go down, it's thirty-seven dollars, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty, forty-four, thirty-nine, and the last one was sixty-four. Throw that last one up, just because, there's a reason for that, and I know what the reason is, we're not according to. But their cost basically, ten years ago, were higher than what we're paying right now. If we go back with Community Bus Service and bring them in, now, if they wanted to, if they wanted to put a good bid in, everything else was, Commissioner, I agree a hundred percent, everything else was good. If they wanted to come in with a good dollar amount, that would knock their price, that would knock their number up twenty points probably, and put them in the seventy dol, seventy-seven point range or higher, then we would bring them in, but they did not.
How much were we paying back then? Uh, because now you're saying we're paying seven fifty on a senior levy and two hundred thousand on a general fund. What did we pay back then from eleven to eighteen?
Yeah, a second.
We had, we had several grants, we were doing probably two point three to two point five million total contract with fifty-three oh seven, fifty-three ten. We had the E and S, we had the educational, uh, grant. Um, then we, we, uh, also used four hundred and twenty-five thousand of the senior levy fund. Uh, that turned into a point of intention after a while, and, um, things, one of the things that I would say right now, and talking to Ed Stark, and talking to the dialysis people right now, is they are very happy that, that the people will work with them. There was a time in two thousand sixteen that CBS actually provided, and that's my first year on the board, actually provided, and that was always a point, we had trouble getting the actual numbers. Okay, but let's just say he did do sixty thousand rides that year, okay? The next year, two thousand seventeen, and I actually had a conversation with, uh, with Diana, Serkovic at the time, and, uh, they were trying to get that money. Long story short, um, all of a sudden, they wanted more money, and held the commissioners, uh, at A, and got another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because they wanted more ridership. But while they were doing that, here's the big sticker, uh, they decided to put everybody on a waiting list in two thousand seventeen. That waiting list caused a lot of disruption in, uh, in the plan, uh, and I, I, it's my opinion, it was all, uh, political, and they, they wanted more money, they got it, and they gave, I think they gave, the next year gave forty thousand rides. For what, four hundred and twenty-five and four hundred and seventy-five thousand. That part right now, we have with the, the four contractors that we have, and I don't know much about Sunset, but the four contractors right now, if they can, uh, get a ride, they are working together right now, and are willing to go ahead and call them up, and somebody will pick the slack up for each other. So they are actually working together, and it, at the time, CBS was supposed to be subcontracting with three contractors, Barwin, USA, and Comfort Caravans. Um, the, the plan was, I compared it at the time with Mobility Rancher, never offered anybody a ride. How they were, uh, old people out, that thing never came through. So there's, there's some issues there, that, or with me personally. But overall, as a whole, uh, everybody is working together right now, and Ed Stark, DB Director, uh, the dialysis people, contractor right now, RANC, my CAT forty-one team, we're not hearing a lot of, of negative right now on the thing, so, uh-
Mr. Clemens, just for the record, please state your name, just for the record. Mr. Clemens, just state your-
Carl Clemens.
Thank you.
Carl Clemens, I'm an advocate, uh, I work part-time with, uh, Western Reserve Independent Levy. Um, and I have sat on the Transit Board for six years, and I have been a person that has been riding the system since, uh, before Niles, I rode it under Niles, Trump Transit, before Trump Transit was taken over. So I actually, and there are a lot of people, I, I challenge people to go ahead and ride it, see what it's like for yourself, see what you think, but everybody's too busy to do that. But when you have to do it, um, now you can, you can understand where the rubber hits the road and how, how it works.
Thank you.
Diane, did you wanna- No.
Yes, Dave Merkin from Comfort Caravan. Just wanted to make this simple, okay? And going back to the fall, when we had a replacement levy for the Trombone County Senior Levy, and Commissioner Malloy attended some of our meetings, and he made very clear to us that he didn't want more taxes, our people can't be taxed anymore, and so on. We came up with an alternative, we came up with replacements and more. With that in mind, you, he, adding costs to our seniors, to our disabled, to be one of these things. If you break this down to its simplest form, how can the committee, being in the nine, in good conscience, how can they recommend, eh, forgetting the others, how can they recommend a company's charging sixty-five to seventy dollars, another one at seventy-seven dollars? Uh, how can they recommend them, being in line that we're trying to save taxes? I mean, that was, Commissioner Malloy, that was your big K there. If we go, if we even considered these companies at these rates, we will be cutting our trips that we can offer more than a half. Then what do we do?
I, I appreciate that. Why don't we set the price, and here's what the price is, here's what it is, instead of all these fluctuating-
Because this is a bid process.
Okay? We've, we've had other things where we've done bids, and we have the prices, this price, and you either meet the price or you don't meet the price, so here's what we're paying.
Bill Danzo of Prosecutor's Office, uh, I'll just try to talk loud, but, um- I'm already up. Alright, thank you. Yeah, I mean, generally, when you're doing a traditional competitive bid process, the, the price is what they're bidding on, and, and you can have a bid on, you know, other things with it, but perhaps maybe what we're thinking of is things where it's construction projects, you often have the engineer's estimate, where you'll say, "Hey, look, I think this building's gonna cost one point six million," and then the bids need to be within a percentage of that to even be eligible for award. Um, for competitive sealed bids, if the price is generally the negotiable, um, part, or not negotiable, but rather the, the part that's actually, you're, you're awarded based on that price. Uh, now, could, could you have perhaps an estimate from a transit administrator that this is what we think? You might be able to do that in the future, but it's never been done on something like this, because again, it's traditionally been, "Here's the service that we need, what would your price be for that service?"
So we don't do that with any other senior levy services, as far as here's the price we-
Also- Commissioners, Mike Salem from Trombone County Transit also, um, regarding what you just brought up, I've always done this, but it's also part that I have to sign, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't bring this with me. Something I have to sign to ODOT, it's called COLA, Cost of Lit, it's the cost, it's the cost of the past contracts. What you do is you have a spreadsheet with all your prices on it. Now, when you get your prices in, you compare it to that spreadsheet. If you've got numbers like sixty-five that are way off in Timbuktu, you disregard that, just because of that. So I've already done that part of it. These prices that we're looking at here are all within what we're already, what we've already paid for the last couple of years.
So your cutoff is based on that? So we'd had twenty people in the same parameters as the top five, we'd had twenty providers, you could prove that?
We could've had twenty providers, possibly, yeah.
Depending on the score, right?
Depending on the score, yeah. But I mean, yeah, in, in reality, yeah, if we would've had twenty people come in, and they would've gone, let's say, between two to three dollars a mile, thirty to forty for, uh, minimum, yeah, we could've possibly had that. Or we would've had to say, "Okay, who do we not take?" I mean, we don't have that at this point, but-
Are, are we doing a three-year contract, is that what law says we do?
No, you could, we've done a one-year contract, we've done a two-year contract. Reason I, and like, uh, this goes back to passports. I was always getting the question, "How can we only get four bidders, how can we only get four bidders?" I said, "Bottom line is, you're only doing a one-year contract, you gotta go past one year." So now, we did go to three plus one. Um, I was getting people interested that we never did before, large companies, a company called MV, and some other ones that we were, you know, these are large transit com, large transit companies that are out there. We never got there, they were never interested in our bid, did they turn anything in? No, but we did get ten different companies that came in. Uh, and we, I mean, Diane can tell us, when we sent out these bids, they went from California to New York, like Florida, something like that, I'm just saying, you know, so that's why it's a three-year plus one, because to get competitive bids, to go get more people interested, you gotta have more. So normally, to get into a bigger company that you really wanna get into, you gotta have a five-year contract, because the way they make their money is they lowball you at the beginning, and the last year or two, they come in a little higher to make their money up.
I, I, I don't know if I like the idea of three years. We don't know where we're going with this, to be quite honest with you, where we're going with this transportation. There's been a lot of he said, she said, a lot of things that, that are possibly available that I don't think the commissioners have had access to. I'd be, I would personally be interested in a one-year, if that's the case.
I, I know we were just talking about, like, with WRTA even, being our own fifty-three-ten, bringing it in-house, not getting away from WRTA and doing it ourselves. We do a three-year contract right now with this, there's no use exploring anything else, I don't know what you're gonna do for the next three years.
I mean, it's, it's like what we, well, not we, but it's like what the commissioners did with the aggregate, with the electric rates. If they went with a three-year, you'd have been locked in. At a one-year, you have some wiggle room down the road, that's my personal opinion. I don't know with Commissioner Bernard, we've already got the bids. Is, is it gonna change the bids if you only go one year?
Diane, you can't change the RFP language now. Fireboard approved the three-year contract. I do understand the three-year term in this aspect. If you're a company-
Fireboard, the fireboard.
You wouldn't want to invest in getting more vehicles to serve Trombone County if you only have a one-year contract. So that was a reason for doing three-year contracts, to get interest in other vendors to provide the service.
So we're committed because of the former board?
Well, Commissioners, Bill Danzo again, Prosecutor's Office, you do have the option, you do have the option of always rejecting all bids and starting the process of bidding over again with the different terms. The only thing that I would say on that is you'd have to lean on Mike to find out, is that going to jeopardize any of the funding and, and the sources through ODOT? But you do always, as a board, have the ability to reject all bids and restart.
And jeopardize the funding, how long is it available?
That's, that's more of a question for Mike, I, I don't know what the ODOT deadlines are for. In other words, if this board chose to reject the bid because they wanna pursue a different term, it, it likely would change the bid prices, but we'd have to bid again.
We'd have to bid again.
What would the, would that affect any of the funding that you look at?
Well, it could affect the funding, because presently, with this contract, like I stated, Community, I'm sorry, yeah, Community Bus Service kept their price the same, I'm sorry, dropped their price in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six is the same as right now, twenty-twenty-seven's a little higher. USA, um, didn't even increase the price over three years. So there's two companies right there that we're gonna be dealing with, and I'll be honest with you, uh, out of our forty thousand trips, they do nineteen thousand of them.
Community Bus Service?
No. Comfort Caravan.
Oh, you said Community Bus Service.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, sorry. Out of, out of the forty thousand trips, and correct me, I believe you said nineteen thousand, I believe you did.
Nineteen thousand, seven hundred and-
Yes.
Yeah, we provided nineteen thousand, seven hundred and something like-
Dave Merkin from Comfort Caravan.
You know why? Because we could get, you know-
Oh, I absolutely understand that. Uh, we provided nineteen thousand, of the nineteen thousand, about eleven thousand, five hundred were wheelchair. Okay, so, so, can I ask a question, Commissioner Ernie?
Yes.
When you talked about, you don't know what coming with, are you referring to this, with, just, are you referring to on-demand transportation, or are you referring to route service transportation?
Well, I-
There's a big difference.
Okay, you might need to educate me on that.
I know, I know.
The new kid on the block. I'm, I'm talking about, uh, we, I had been, matter of fact, when I ran for Commissioner, I had mentioned a service that was similar to what they offered in Delaware County, which is a, a dial-up, Uber-based, Lyft-type, Mike, you and I have discussed- Mike, you and I have discussed this. Now, I might be wrong, maybe I'm in a different, this is in a different league here. You know, I'm very interested, you know, I mentioned that and I did, I was pretty adamant about that type of a service. So I don't know if what we're talking about today at a three-year negates that, or whether that would still be a possibility and available.
Okay, again, to educate you a little bit, all of our past contracts, the clients had a minimum of forty-eight hours.
Please, Mike.
Sorry, Mike Salem, which way? All of our present past contracts, you always had to call forty-eight hours. That's one of the questions I have on there, can you do same day? They're saying yes. Sunset is saying yes. Darwin's saying possibly. USA is saying yes. Community bus service is saying no. So going back to what you're looking for is the same day, that's what we're trying to implement. It's not gonna happen overnight. But that's what I'm trying to implement in this three-year thing, that we can do the same day.
My big concern with this, and I'm not turning your finger, Mr. Perkins, you've been a rock star with this, so I'm not picking on you when I figure my comment.
Can I just answer Commissioner Hernandez's question? Because then Mr. Danzo may be able to, correct me if I'm wrong, when we signed this three-year contract, we're getting no guarantee of service. So let's say that a year from now, you come up with your Uber or whatever, doesn't matter, we're not getting any trips, or we have nothing in the contracts there, we're not guaranteed anymore? Is that correct?
Uh, Prosecutor's Office, that's possible, you know, we'd have to take a look at how that contract's presently drafted. I agree, though, there is no, as far as I know, again, like we talked earlier, there is no guaranteed number of rides, there's no guarantees on that. Some of our contracts, in the past, I know, have had language even that says, you know, the contract can be terminated early at the county's convenience. So it depends on that. If that's in there, that could be another...
I believe that's in there. I apologize.
Yeah, that could be another angle. It is in there.
It is in there. We have the option to... So the commissioners have the option to terminate the contract? The agreement?
We just, I'd wanna, okay, I'd wanna, you know, yeah, and I take you at your word, I just would have to double-check before I answered you officially on that.
Well, that would make a difference, only because if there is something that we should be looking at, and we're not locked into this three-year contract agreement, I don't know if the commissioners agree with me.
And I agree with that.
Commissioner?
My big thing is, we got, Veterans does one thing for Veterans rides. JFS, they have their ride system. DD's got their system, we got ours. We keep circling the wagons with this stuff, and we're looking for a better system to serve more constituents in the county. You mix in the seniors with the handicap, with the veterans, with the average person just wants to get to work, and there's gotta be a better system where we can all work together, it's gonna save money. And I just don't want us to pigeonhole our stuff, we're, using one of your terms, Commissioner Bernard, kicking the can down the road for three more years until we look at this again to address a bigger problem with this stuff. Transportation is, some of the head, we've had many meetings last year and even the year before, where constituents came in, we talked about busing, we talked about rideshare, we talked about all these different things, we never really solved the problem, other than a little Band-Aid with a couple of WRTA routes, continuing with what we've had the same, with the people, we've had the same. I just think there's a bigger solution out there somewhere that we need to tackle, and I just don't want us, if we get, if there is an out clause and we can do better, if there's a chance for us to do better, serve more at less, we just need to keep that option open without being committed into a program for three years or three years with another, an additional, that's my concern. And I do love the fact that, the wheelchair rides you talked about, that was a concern I had here. I sat in a meeting here once, Mr. Joseph came in the meeting, and I watched him on many occasions wait outside for more than forty-five minutes for a ride, because there wasn't a wheelchair accessible provider available. And out of these five you have, there's only two that are wheelchair accessible, it looks like. And thank God, Mr. Perkins's company has that, and another one does, but how many people are getting left waiting, 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 because there's not wheelchair accessible? I would like to see more of that in this program, and that's where...
That's why Sunset was the seventh, they have seven wheelchairs. To answer part of your question, we started, I hate to give you history last night, sorry to do this, guys, but when we, when the Tormal County Transit Board was dissolved, I did just the disabled transportation, Diane did the senior transportation, Ed Stark did the Tormal County Board of DD. Within about a year or two, I started bringing everything together. I started working with Diane, bringing the senior in, I went with Ed Stark, brought the Tormal County Board of DD, and then we also brought the veterans in. So we are working with the veterans also, with transportation. Now granted, yes, the veterans have their own vehicle that go up to, that goes up to Cleveland and back, it's only Cleveland and back. They don't go anyplace else at seven in the morning. We transport veterans all the time on our vehicles.
If they're sixty-year-old or...
No.
Any veteran?
It's sixty-year-olds or disabled. Trust me, if they're sixty-year-olds, or if they've been a veteran, they're probably disabled. Okay? So there's either one or the other. Also, I've talked with the Veterans Office, people at the Veterans Office, not all veterans, I know that, but I'm just saying, a lot of them, that are even under sixty, are probably disabled. But I've talked to people at the Veterans Office. If they have problems paying for the trip, veterans will help them. There's a formula they use, I don't know anything about it, it's strictly up to them, but I've worked back and forth with the veterans all the time. So we've already accomplished all this. I agree with you a hundred percent, we wanna continue to go this way. And there is a way to do that, and we can talk about that another time, that's bringing in a W, an RTA, Regional Transit Authority. That's one of the things I wanna talk to you about at some point.
We discussed it briefly.
Right. But right now, we're just trying to get these contracts started and go from there with us.
Commissioner, it sounds like that.
With all due respect too, so one thing that you guys...
Excuse me, Mr. Clemmons, Mr. Clemmons, the Commissioner's speaking. Let him talk, go ahead. Well, please, go ahead. Mr. Clemmons, state your name again, please.
Carl Clemmons.
Go ahead, you can...
I just wanna say, and I can't see real good, so I don't wanna be rude, but with all due respect, Commissioner Hernandez...
Yes, sir.
It's actually, I did reach out to Delaware County, and they are in-house, have in-house drivers, they do not rely, there are some issues there, but they do not have Lyft and Uber that are doing, they are an in-house thing, and they have a contract with another county for fixed routes, kinda like we do with WRTA crossing over, but they are not reliant upon there. But the question, the good thing that you guys are doing is that you guys are engaging and asking questions, because, I hate to say it, no disrespect, but you have to understand the mechanism and ask the questions, because you guys are sitting there in the dark more than I am when it comes to transportation. You have to go ahead and engage with it, ask the questions.
That's the truth.
Listen to it, make the decisions, because we can grow this and we can do it together. And right now, DD and Senior Levy and the fifty-three oh seven are all working together.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Commissioner? Mr. Chair, it sounds like the board wants to look at other options to see if we can improve the transportation system, and I don't have a problem with that. I mean, anytime we can improve anything, I'm for it. But I think by us entering into a three-year contract, I think you're gonna find out that we're gonna keep the prices down, okay? And if we're not obligated into giving these companies a certain amount of trips, why not take the lower rate? I mean, right now, they're the best that we have. And I, personally, I haven't heard a lot of complaints. I just think, I think if you, if we don't give them a three-year contract, the rates are gonna go up, and it's gonna cost us a lot more money. Now, if we wanna look at other options, I think we have the right to do that. But no one knows if the other options are better or worse. And right now, we'd better stick with what we know than to get into something that we don't know. Well, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. There is an opt-out, I guess. There is an opt-out. I'm just saying, when we commit, and I understand your reasoning, but I think Commissioner Malloy would agree, when you're locked in... I don't think we're locked into anything, though. Well, we're not, because there is an opt-out. I understand that.
There's another problem. I, Mike Salem, Tormal County Transit, there's another problem too. The present contract that we did have was a two plus one, two years plus one. We've already gone into the extension. We only have till November to have this done by. So if you were to go and throw this out and start all over again, it would, I, we probably wouldn't get it done on time, and then guess what? Now we can't even transport anybody.
And if I'm, if I have a three-year contract and I need new vehicles, I'm gonna go out and buy them. If I have a one-year contract, I'm not gonna go out and buy a lot of vehicles and say I may lose it next year. I mean, if that's in anything, that's in lawn maintenance or whatever. So, you know, long-term contracts, as long as they're providing the service, it's good for people, you know, and it gives them some assurance that they can go out and spend that money. I just think we go with this and then we look down the road. If we have a better option, I think we're all gonna be for it, but...
Is there a way we can add people in this three-year period? Like say, one of these companies adds vehicles, or gets handicap vehicles, or a new company starts up, are they locked out for three years?
But if the rate is at seventy dollars, why would you wanna add them?
Well, no, say, what if someone comes in now and their rate's twenty-five, they're starting a business, they go buy five trucks...
Well, they have to be ready to bid it, though.
Three, are they locked out for three years, is what I'm asking? Are we gonna allow them in after year one, or take new bids, you know, after that?
No, you can't do that.
No?
No. You know, I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench in this whole thing. Only way you can do it, and Bill, tell me what the number is, is it fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand that you do not have to go out for bids?
Uh, right now, it's actually a little bit over seventy-five thousand.
So, I apologize, we got... Reason is, remember I told you I used to work with some of the other ones? I didn't go out for bid, I went to the fifty thousand by disabled client. Went with that, we got the quote. So if somebody came in here, if you wanted to do it at that point, you could do it for like seventy thousand and add somebody to this if you wanted to.
Well, I, I don't, I, yeah, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, I would not recommend that.
No, I don't recommend that, I just stated.
Um, I think that, you know, when you do, when you do send out a bid and then add other people in after the fact, because they're under, you're kinda going against the spirit of the bidding statute, I wouldn't recommend that.
I mean, my question to you, Commissioner Malloy, is there, is there a reason that you're not satisfied with what you're seeing? I mean, you've been here for two years, so, you know, are you seeing some problems that we should see aware of?
Just, I would like to see more wheelchair accessibility.
Oh, I think, I think we all would. I mean, that, but they have to buy more vehicles to do that.
That's why we added Sunset to the, this is Diane's COVID, why we added Sunset to the mix, because they're, they had a wheelchair fleet.
Right, right.
I just wanna hand this out. This is a summary, since I've been here from two thousand and seven to current, and I will tell you that our rates used to be after, our costs used to be roughly thirty-five dollars per trip. With our grant now that we're getting, last year, when we got the full grant, we were eight dollars and forty-four cents per trip. I dropped this now and it goes boom. Where are you gonna get eight dollars and forty-four cents a trip? By Uber, you're not even gonna get that.
Is there any way that, are there any numbers out there saying that we're not taking care of those that need wheelchair accessibility?
Okay.
You know, that's my question.
Dave Perkins, Compteur Man. I think that's a great question, because I beg to differ with Mike's analysis that there are trips being denied. We disagree on that. I don't see them coming, nor am I getting calls saying, hey, how come you didn't take this? And I've told everybody since day one. The only thing that would prohibit us from doing more wheelchair trips is more wheelchair vehicles. I have no aversion to buying whatever is necessary. I bought five last year, if I need more, I will do it. So I've got plenty of drivers, if I need a vehicle. If Mike says, hey, you're missing this, you're being denied, I'll have a vehicle here within one week. That's all it takes, I buy them out of that. And I don't foresee that to be a problem. Staffing-wise, I'm in good shape, so I won't have a problem doing that. I don't think that there is a problem with the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred that we did last year. And I don't know, I mean, I guess it can happen, someone might call twenty-four hours in advance and say I need a wheelchair, that I didn't take it, and they'll be all, okay, I could do it, but...
About five hundred or a thousand or two thousand a year that we're missing out?
No.
On trips?
No, if that commission...
No way, nowhere near that.
You're in...
No. One other thing, if I may, I agree with what Commissioner Bernard just said, because if you sign the three-year contract, of course, you're expecting that. We know that there is an app voiding, because I know my contract doesn't pay any guaranteed amount of dollars. Now, Commissioner Hernandez is saying, we should do research, find out if our numbers are good. Always should be doing that, okay? I, after being in this business as long as I have, feel very comfortable that our pricing is good. We do a lot of insurance work, we're the largest provider in this area for CareSource and United Healthcare Transportation. It comes from a broker. If we weren't fair, they wouldn't be, and their prices actually are a little higher than yours. So I feel very comfortable. And it goes back to what you said, you know, we're kind of in the dark, we're not sure it's new, and I think you should do your research. I feel comfortable that your research will bring you back where you are, and you'll be happy with what you're getting, the prices you're getting.
Let me say something really important right now to substantiate what Mike and Mr. Perkins have said. These calls that there was nothing available, this is a will call, okay? You can schedule a pickup time, and most of the time, with a scheduled pickup time, they will be there. They'll be there probably within fifteen, twenty minutes, or probably right in time. When there is a will call, okay, the commissioners' meeting and all the ethics we had last year, and Mr. Joseph sits in here, the meeting goes on and on and on, and then he decides he's gonna make the call. At that time, depending on what else was on the manifest, has to be obligated to go take them, and then he goes stand-in line. So the will call, when there might not be availability for that, that is where, when you ride it and you see the difference between a will call ride and a subscription ride or a scheduled ride, all three differ, okay? Those would all behoove you guys to understand that a little bit better, and that would help you actually make better decisions.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Carl. Mike Salem, Tormal County Transit, a couple more things. In regard to the group that we've had, this last year, I had nine complaints, maybe ten, but nine written ones. They were all taken care of. When I had a complaint with Dave, not with his company, he took care of it right away. He said, you want me to call the first one? I said, yeah, would you mind calling? He took care of it. Same with the other places, so the complaints were all taken care of, nine of them, that's all I had. Did I ever have people that said they were denied? Yeah. Then I would get them over to there, and then they would call there. So did we have any denials? We might've had, but a handful. The other part that, what Carl's talking about, when you schedule a ride, and I hate to point out, but when you schedule a ride, you gotta call and tell them, my doctor's appointment's at one o'clock. I live here, they look in the computer and say, oh, we need to pick you up at twelve-thirty to get you there by one o'clock. I always tell them, I know doctor's offices are real rough, but talk to your doctor, find out how long you're gonna be there. You wanna schedule the ride back. You wanna schedule for two o'clock, fifteen, because if you don't, now you're a will call. But a will call means what he's talking about. You're done at the doctor's office, you pick up the phone, and now you call the company and say, come pick me up. Your problem is, you may be sitting there an hour, just because they don't have any, they're booked already. So that's the problem with the will. So that's the only thing I try to educate the clients, do not, if you don't have, do a will call, don't do a will call. So, I mean, commissioners have to make a decision, I'm just giving you recommendations. You know, make the decision tomorrow and go from there, but like I said, to go out to rebid, I don't think we've got enough time to go rebid at this time.
You have any additional questions? Okay, long discussion. Thank you, Mike, thank you, everyone involved in the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Clemens, for your input. We're going to move on to item number twenty five. authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation, uh, Office of Transportation Standards for twenty twenty three through twenty twenty five certification and assurances.
So this just needs to go as part of the contract with whatever companies we.
Right.
That's what that is.
Twenty six, to receive and place on file the Trumbull County Transit Western Reserve Transit Authority operating data for twenty twenty four. Move on to twenty seven. approved use of Wellness Committee fund by the Trumbull County Wellness Committee to provide a night at the Mahoney Valley Scrappers game as appreciation of employees for being dedicated to their wellness and participating in wellness activities. Any Trumbull County employee who competes one wellness activity between January one of twenty five through June thirty twenty five, employee receive a Scrappers ticket and a wristband for the employee and their immediate family members. Each ticket and wristband includes a seat in the upper box section. And here's a good one, all you can eat wristband. All you can eat wristband. That can be dangerous. That can be used at the main concession stand for food items on all you can eat menu. Ten percent discount on Scrappers merchandise and an entry in the nightly group sweet steaks. Tickets are for July twenty five of twenty five home game where fireworks will be after the game. I think that would be nice for.
So we want to reward employees for being healthy by giving them all you can eat hot dogs down your throat for hours and popcorn and everything you go.
Yeah. So Jenna Amryan, Trumbull County Health Department and the Trumbull County Wellness, uh, Committee Chair. So, but I don't know if some of the New York commissioners know there is a wellness committee. Um, a lot, all the departments can have representation on there. If you don't, don't know who your represent, representative is, or you want to get someone on there, please feel free to email me. We're always looking for more wellness committee members. So, um, with the negotiations, we do have more, uh, of a wellness budget this year. And so we thought we would do something to appre, kind of give appreciation back to the employees. We've been adding a lot of wellness activities. Sometimes you'll see my emails, um, with rally coming up, we'll be doing, uh, another virtual five K. We do go through Strava. So, um, John Hickey and I met with Scrappers and we've done a lot of work with them. And so this is the price they're willing to give us, um, that they're willing to even do a Friday night game with fireworks after for employees, um, Trumbull County employees. We thought we were very, um, thankful that Scrappers was willing to do that. So, yes, they have this program where, um, you can get, it'll get you your ticket. We decided to do upper box, they would block off a section. It would all be Trumbull County employees and their family members go that night. And then they give you a wristband for the making session for food only, that is not all you can drink.
Well. It's a real, really wellness with all you can eat.
Yeah. Because you only get one cheat, you get one cheat day, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Martha will let you know about that.
Some people get cheat days.
Yeah. So anyway, we just decided that we wanted to offer something to the, um, employees and a lot we've been through with COVID and the stress in the last few years here. So we thought with, that we have the opportunity for this. Um, and like I said, we will be having roughly, I think, six or so opportunities from January to June that they would submit to get their tickets. Um, Dom, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. John Hickey, Trumbull County EMA. We did try to negotiate a ten cent beer vice.
Got to ask it to wellness. Especially working here.
You know, we, we've been talking for about a year. We, we really wanted to put something out there to, to say thanks. And we have the funding available and we have to kind of tie it to help. Uh, hopefully everybody will take advantage of that and let them go.
Yeah, and we've been noticing over the last year or so, an uptake in participation with rally and the incentives that are available when you're on our insurance. So we just thought this would be a good way to really, you know, thank the employees for, for participating in wellness activities and trying to be healthy. You get your sheet, you get your one cheat day.
Yeah.
All on, all on us.
I want to thank you and also want to thank the Scrappers, uh, management for, you know, allowing this to happen. But to be clear about it too now, they would contact you.
Yeah, if it gets approved tomorrow, then we have our wellness committee meeting Thursday afternoon this week, and I have a form that they will approve all the information on there. And so I will send this out once it's all approved and we get everything established with Scrappers, that they would check which wellness activity they did out of that list, how many tickets they want their name, signing that they are not lying and showing me like a screenshot if they did the rally survey in their app. And then I will take all of that and, um, we are asking for five hundred tickets because we think that's about what we're going to get the first year. Scrappers did say if we get close to that, we could come back and I would get read approval and they would work with us, um, to get us another sec. They want to try and keep us all together too so that you can also be there with your, your employees, your coworkers, your colleagues, so that you can all enjoy with your families the night together.
And that application will be sent to?
The everyone. The everyone, and then we also have some, we have some departments that are not on the everyone. And I have those always, they get it as well, like the corps. Uh, we have a JFS representative, so she passed, she then forwards it on to them. So if you, if you are a department that you are not on the everyone and you're not getting it forwarded on, please, please let me know because I want to make sure that all employees are available, all the wellness email.
Very good. Thank you.
Alex DeWitt, Human Resources Department. I would like to thank the Wellness Committee. They do a phenomenal job, um, honestly couldn't do without them, to be honest with you. Because it's one thing that I, to be quite frank with you, just don't have to worry about, which is amazing. Um, there is a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of institutional knowledge to what Jenna does at every department. Um, I see somebody from HR here, I see somebody from HR, I have Rebecca Smith sit on the panel. We obviously have John Hickey. Um, and one thing that I want to pass the commissioners with thinking about is wellness may not, may not just be about what we eat. It may be about mental health and it may be about just getting together with friends and family and having that opportunity. Wellness sometimes can be contributed to just getting out of the house for some employees. Some employees work from home. I know that may sound silly, that may be changing coming to a theater near us. But either way, wellness, holistic wellness is, is very some, very much something that the Wellness Committee looks to support, not just necessarily, I totally, it is kind of funny that, you know, eat a hot dog and feel great. But, I mean, who doesn't eat a hot dog and feel great, right?
Right, yeah. For a short period of time.
I don't know, but, yeah.
Without the vine, I do.
Yeah. And if we're looking to add some more, more of those things, you know, like, health is very important. Uh, we do our survey, we've gotten some feedback on financial health being something that we are looking into opportunities, um, to provide that education to the employees. And I say again, if anyone here has any suggestions, please let me know. The committee always, it's always open to me more for employees.
My fellow Trumbull County Auditor, I want to challenge my fellow public officials to participate in the wellness activities. It is a good example to your employees.
Are you, is that centered towards somebody like me?
No, obviously, it's not. I do, I, I participate and I actually won one of them. Came second one of them because it's, it's just good, it's good for you, it's good for your mental health, especially the activity part, the things that we use through Strava. Um, getting out and moving are very important, are very important.
Agreed.
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, Alex, you want to chime in on the next?
Uh, Alex DeWitt, Trumbull County Human Resources Department, just based in San Diego. Um, Commissioner, we're asking you to approve the transfer of Mr. Harlan Jones from Facilities Manager at twenty nine thirty five per hour with that currently held within the Board of Developmental Disabilities to the Facility Supervisor. They range twelve, four years, which is currently the amount of years that he has within the county. At thirty four thirty six an hour at the Building Maintenance Department effective March third, twenty twenty five. Um, obviously this action is the recommendation of Trumbull County Human Resources Department. However, the board, you did also interview this gentleman as well as the other gentleman. Um, the candidate will hopefully be put on next week. There is a huge difference why I can't put both on this week. The big difference is Harlan Jones, Mr. Jones is a current county employee, meaning he's already been background tested, drug screened, all of that. The other candidate is not a county employee, therefore it takes a little bit longer. I don't know if you know, but I'm here to tell you, a BCI background check can take us anywhere from two weeks to two months, depending on how backed up BCI is. Um, obviously drug tests come back quicker than that. But, so we are fully anticipating, hopefully, that we will get that information back and both of them will be able to start together on March third. Um, lots of back and forth conversations between these two candidates. Again, commissioners you've already interviewed, um, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer, but I also do want to note that this gentleman comes to us very skilled, not only within the county, he comes very highly recommended, um, by all of his references, of which I call within the county. Um, additionally, he services anywhere from roughly six to seven buildings right now under the Board of Developmental Disabilities. And please note that he'll be obviously servicing on the upwards of twenty three buildings. So there is quite an incremental change, hence the dollar amount.
Well, I just may add that we, we did interview Harlan. And, uh, he's a, uh, how to say, he's a younger man that, uh, really wants to aspire and move up the ladder. And we, uh, I think the commissioners saw that in him because we did question him, you know, why he was moving from here to here. And I think he'll be a, a great addition to who we have coming in to replace Bill who's going to be very hard to replace. But, uh, you know, I, I, I have every bit of confidence that Harlan's going to work out very well. And I do, and I noticed from your email, so we need a thirty day, being the JFS, uh, needed a thirty day.
Yeah, the Board of Developmental Disabilities, so, um, as our.
Or just.
Yeah. As our, has been calling me kind of to, to get updates along the way of Alex, when do you think this is going to happen? And I could only give, you know, hypotheticals because until somebody accepts an offer is the first thing. And then, of course, the Board of Commissioners then needs to accept that offer. So, um, you know, my hands are a little bit tied when it comes to how governmental hiring goes and being able to say yes, you know, because ultimately we don't have that, that final approval. So yesterday him and I had to go back and forth multiple times. Um, he does not want to do a disservice, which speaks magnitude to me because that's an employee in this county who does not want to leave another county department high and dry. So I think that we have to, um, commend that. And I think that a thirty day, you know, notice is, is more than feasible for him in this specific situation.
I agree. Okay. So we're going to go into executive session, Ohio Revis Code one two one two two G three, uh, with our attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving, uh, the public bodies that are subject to pending imminent court action. And then we will reconvene from that under one twenty one point two two G three. And Martha, you handed me something.
Yes, I, I'd like to, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I just want to revisit what I had, um, Tim present, uh, I'm sorry, Chief Deputy Haniford present last week. I, I felt like we didn't have enough background on this for you guys, so I wanted, I prepared a little bit for you. So the tower itself on the, this is about the Mark Tower project, which is funded through the ARPA funds. The tower itself was provided by the State of Ohio through the O, Ohio Department of Administrative Services. While the ARPA funds are paying for the electronic equipment necessary, the shelter that's necessary and the electrical connection. The projected cost for the county's part of this project was eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That was obligated via MOU. The only remaining part of this project is the electrical connection, which includes electrical service to the entire site. And as I mentioned last week, the entire site includes, uh, the sanitary engineers, water tower, as well as a radio tower, which we leased to I Heart. Um, so last summer, Chief Deputy Haniford met with Ohio Edison and representatives from Ohio Department of Administrative Services to discuss what would be needed for the connection, to get the scope of it. He reported on this meeting and about the scope of the work needed to the Board of Commissioners at the time and asked if we should proceed with getting the estimate. They instructed us to proceed with getting the estimate and we did so. It took Ohio Edison approximately four months to get us the estimate, um, and that Chief Deputy Haniford presented to you last week. Last week you asked me to see if ARPA funds could be used to be, to pay for the entire connection since, uh, but for the Mark Tower, we wouldn't need to replace or update anything for the water tower or the radio tower. I did so. Attorney Rogers said that the ARPA funds can be used for the entire connection. I've included her email regarding this. Um, Bob Mariano from the Sanitary Engineers Office pointed out to us, uh, or pointed out to Chief Deputy Haniford that there is a tax charge on the estimate that we were given. Attorney Danzo is investigating whether the county may be exempt from that charge of twenty eight thirty oh three. If so, that would reduce the estimated cost to twenty one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty seven cents. I've included a chart of the projected final cost to complete the project. And if we go with, if, if we have to pay the total, uh, twenty four thousand, five forty nine is what I've, um, used, there will be an estimated residual fund of a hundred and fifty six thousand, two hundred and five sixty. What I need to know from the board today, do you want to move forward with the electrical work from Ohio Edison on this estimate in order to complete the Mark Tower project?
This, this is ARPA.
Right, and it's residual, which can be applied to another approved project. So we have approved projects, uh, county projects that could use more funding, including some sanitary things. And you guys will decide that later. Today, today, what I need from you is do you want me to move forward and with Ohio Edison towards this?
I mean, it's ARPA money, there's, if we don't go with that, then we're going to have to do something. Where are we going to get it?
Well, that's exactly my point. There were questions raised whether it should be moved forward last week and that's what I came back with.
I don't see any reason why not, Commissioner Bernard.
Okay. All right. So what I will do is I don't know for sure. I need to check with legal counsel to see if this requires a separate agenda item or not. If it does not, we'll just move forward. If it does, it'll be on the agenda next week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. Okay, so, yes, we will. Uh, that, that completes our agenda items, but we will move forward with, uh, those that are here. Um, please state your name and reason for your visit.
Hello, my name is, uh, Michelle Baker. I'm a private citizen. I've been fighting for the last five years to get, uh, water at my location. I am surrounded by city water. I have tried contacting county water. Um, they said they do not have lines to contact city. The city just refuses to give me any information about how to go about to get water. We have county sewage, but I have county water. I can throw a rock, I have city water.
What city?
Uh, I'm actually Howland Township.
Howland Township. Is the line running?
Do you know where Believers Church is?
Does the line run?
It runs on Elm Road and North River Road. And right next to me is Believers Church and down, um, Wimmer Avenue. But Wilson Avenue does not have city water and my well is impossible to drink or get clean. I just spent almost ten thousand on the filtration system and it still is not drinking water.
Um, Gary, would you give us?
Sorry, uh, twenty three forty one Wilson Avenue. I'm almost at the corner of Elm, North River Road.
Yeah, that is all within the City of Warren system. Uh, we, we can't get to you, uh, they, they.
Yeah, the county, they said they do not have lines, they cannot get to us. But we have contacted, I've contacted, I have another neighbor here as well. And I have multiple neighbors that are willing to come in and talk with you guys. We cannot get any information on how to get water in that area. I mean, there's water right around us. I mean, I, right across the street, there's water. But they, the City of Warren just says no.
Because like in Hubbard, and there's a township and a city, and then they allow them to mine under the road to tap into the line.
Exactly.
I don't know, Gary, is that doable? That'd be Warren.
Well, the thing is, Commissioner, we, we don't have, here's the map. Warren has this yellow area here.
Right.
You can see right here is Elm Road.
Okay.
Here's North River.
Right.
I mean, look how far away the county facilities are. I, we got our Cedar Creek Water District here.
Right.
This is our Howland District, we got a, a mega here. I mean, this is.
So why is Warren not being?
I, I don't know. I, I can't.
Why, I mean, I, I would.
Well, that's what I.
I think your, the city has to get involved and, and, and figure a way to get you across the street.
There's been multiple neighbors going down there and they just flat out say, no, we're not putting it in. Well, how can we go about getting anybody in because it's right across the street?
Doesn't make, it doesn't seem to make sense to me. You would think that they would be, Warren obliged to be able to service you. And like I said, you know, I'm familiar with my community, Hubbard Township. Across the street is a line and it's the water and they, they allow you to tap in. I don't know. And then they meter it, of course, you know.
Yeah, of course, I'm willing to, I mean, also, we're paying sixty seven dollars for county sewage Yeah, of course, I'm willing to, I mean, also, we're paying sixty-seven dollars for county sewage when the residents in the area-
And you have well water.
-do have city water. They are only paying like forty dollars a month for water and sewage.
Yeah, it sounds like-
So she getting assessed a fifty-seven dollar charge for having well water with our sewer lines?
Exactly. But the people that are using city water-
Well, is it going to the city of Warren or is it coming out?
If you're getting billed by the county for sewer, so are your neighbors.
Yeah, but their sewer-
But they're paying a separate bill to the City of Warren for water.
But their sewer is cheaper than our sewer.
Oh, it would depend on how much, uh, water they use.
Because it's based on how much water they use.
Yeah, it would.
I'm, I'm a-
And you're on a flat rate.
I'm on a flat rate, I'm a one, one person, uh, limited income, and I am paying more to one person than people that have three and four people using city water.
Oh, we should-
Gary, is there any way that you could reach out to the City of Warren?
Yeah, that's what I was going to get from her, right?
And maybe you can get a better answer?
That, that, yeah, her calling is trying to get it. If I call, maybe I can, you know, assist. I know the people there, see if we can do something to help you.
You need to give him the number, and so he can contact you.
Yeah, your name was Michelle Baker?
And I have Fred Ritter here, he's also my neighbor.
How many, about how many residents are, I mean, in, in, on your street or can tie-
On my street, I know there's only, I think, two houses that are actually on Wilson that are not connected. Um, Denora has, I think, five or six. Um, Asimul has one, two, three, four, five, six. Um, and all of them are willing to get connected, they just, they have no access. And we can't understand when it's on Elm Road, and it's at North River Road, and it's at Believers Church. Literally, um, Denora's here, I live here, Believers is right here. And the house on the other kitty corner tapped across onto Wimber. And they have water, but I can't get water.
Gary, those are all City of Warren water lines, so.
Yes, they're all City of Warren water lines, I understand that.
I showed you on the map.
For the county service, you would be so far out, it would be not-
I agree. And county water is for better water.
Now, for the sewer up there, we did a petition project in that Overland Avenue and Elm Road area. And maybe, you're saying there's other people up there that don't have water?
Um, I also live over behind, uh, certified on Blair Drive.
Well, let's stay in this neighborhood.
But it's considered Warren, Warren new, it's the same neighborhood. And they tried years ago to get water, and they couldn't get it, um, something about an annexation.
Do you think your other neighbors would sign a petition for public water service?
Absolutely.
Even though it's Warren's Water Service Area, we can put together a project to get the lines extended.
They absolutely would. The, the kick last time was they wanted to annex us into Warren, and nobody wants to be annexed into Warren. Because we had to pay income tax.
Right, I can understand that. I'm not here to, to, you know, have one, you know, to tell you to annex or not, that, that's not my job.
But, yes, I have-
But if I could get a petition for it, but let me talk to the City of Warren first and see if that's something that they, they would-
I have at least fifty percent that will be here tomorrow if I call them.
All right, what was your, uh, address again?
Twenty-three forty-one Wilson.
Forty-one Wilson. And, and how many property owners do you think are out there? Are we talking about ten, or are we talking about twenty to thirty? Sounds like a nice little project.
Mr. Ritter, could you give your name, please?
Yeah, Fred Ritter. Um, she did, I'd like to tell you the reasons the school got the wa, city water put in, but they tested it and, uh, open-
Unstable public consumption.
All right, and there's a lot of neighbors around there. I, uh, I used to live in that neighborhood. The old lady across the street, she still lives there. Um, one guy, his, well, class, whatever, he drove the gas. He lost fifteen feet of gas. The old lady, she'll give you a rundown of the whole thing. And it, he called and called, and he called this person, called this person, called this person back, called this person. They just started playing games for us, and I, I just went, I'll be honest.
Okay, well, we, we have that all throughout the county. All the other places where we're extending water lines, that Elm Road project, we had, you know, uh, very similar conditions, even over on, uh, Commissioner Malloy's neighborhood. They have bad wells. Uh, that whole project we built out in the western part of the county, Southington, Brayceville, uh, Farmington, that whole area, four wells. So, yeah, we're familiar with that, and we know the reasons that people want the public water service. And we'll do what we can to try to, uh, get something to you. But this is the first I'm hearing about. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you weren't, you weren't, sorry, Michelle Baker, um, nobody put us to get ahold of you. They were just talking to us between EPA, uh, Warren, county, county engineers, or city engineers and all that, so.
Um, I can tell you that we just got a recent petition in, uh, the Central Visetta area. A resident's in the same situation. I talked to one property owner, he went and circulated a petition around all the neighbors, got it to us, and now it's on our project list. So, uh, I think we can do something similar here.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We can't guarantee anything, but if anybody could do it, Gary can do it.
We've got a starting point, that's what we need.
Yes, right. Um, what, you know what, Bill, one moment, because he's been here.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, he can wait, Bill.
Mine's a, mine's a semi-quick question, it's a payment in a woman building and a generator that we purchased for them. Um, I would need to know what you want to do with that generator. Either, it's in storage, it's been in storage for a year.
Yeah, that's-
It's a new one. Either we install it to their building now, and then when they decide to buy the home, pick it up and move it with them? Because their old generator is supposed to go, it's earmarked for the Board of Elections.
Jeez.
And that's-
So it's going to the nine oh one?
The new one.
Problem with that is, we're going to spend all that money to hook it up and work-
Well, this is started a year ago.
Yeah.
The anticipation of not being-
I mean, we're anticipating a move.
This is the question I need to ask the board, whether install it, move it, or do it.
I want to spend that kind of money? What kind of money are we looking at?
It's, well, the PO is issued already, but it's either expired or been expired, it depends on-
Is it ARPA?
Yeah, it's-
The generator was ARPA, but the installation, I don't think was.
Uh, hold on a second, I, hold on.
It's okay.
Because I, because where that we had the PO for the installation was in a, um, in a, on my space.
Three thousand.
Yeah, we look at it.
This is why we got to find a way to build these buildings. You have to render later, all these expenses.
It's oh-seven-seven, that's ARPA.
Is it?
Yep.
It's ARPA money.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, but that happens when you're money wise.
What, that, that actually, the projects have to be completed by the end of twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-six, okay.
If, and if it's going to expire, we can renew that.
I'm making sure, that's all we're doing. I just want to make sure we're covered on this issue, it's thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. Well, uh, I mean, huh.
I'll just inform the Commissioner, that's all I can do.
I would say, I, I wouldn't do anything with it right now. We need to make some serious decisions on these three main things soon. Because we're going to have to do them, whether we do it now, a year from now, two years from now, the process is going up every day and everything. And here's another situation. We want to pay thirteen grand, then pay thirteen grand to reinstall it somewhere else and to move it.
Commissioner, Alex, you have done through it two weeks there. If I was that thirteen grand, is that to install it nine oh one and then move that one to the Board of Elections? Or is that just, that's one way?
No, that's one way.
Okay.
With the understanding that I was going to take that old generator and have it moved to-
Which is another-
The Board of Elections, so they have backup power.
And who was going to perform that, somebody?
They're going to have to get this.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure we're clear. Thirteen thousand is included in ARPA, but then you would be looking at an additional.
Right.
So we're clear, okay.
That gives not, that gives the Board of Elections, I'm taking, remember, say-
All the same age.
And I, I would hope we can have nine oh one into someplace by the end of twenty-six. If, if not, we're not doing our job.
Right, I agree.
I mean, what you would do, Alex, just so you know, they would load up that old generator and drop it off there.
Okay.
They would not hold it very tight. So then we could have some around it, just a barricade, it's usable. It's usable, sheets of equipment, just that we wanted to upgrade. There's your ARPA funds, I'm sorry.
No, you're kind of, I'm just-
You know what I'm saying, so we got a new one for them. That's what we did.
Thank you, Bill. Stacy, you have?
No, I can go over here, they were talking, I mean, I could hear them.
I'm not, I'm not, I trust me, I- Liberty Township.
Liberty Township, Tom Weaver.
Tom Weaver, yes, sir.
I'm just actually, I, I just need, because I have some questions about road vacation. I was trying to, been trying to get this done. Is, is that, he's, uh-
Yeah, it's-
Tom Weaver, I pulled up several messages, I apologize, hundred bucks, um, for trying to find out about road vacation. It's kind of, in some counties, it's a lot easier, but in here, it seems to be pretty tough. So, what, where I live, my house is, I'm in the middle of the woods, and I, I could show you this. Commissioner Bernard, you could actually look at it. But my house is like this, and it was built in nineteen forty-eight or whatever. And the, the way that it goes, the tip of it and the driveway goes into the, into the paper road. There's a paper road that's been there since nineteen forty-eight, something like that. And it goes all the way through here, there's no other houses or anything that, that are down there. And there's an access point on the other side from here. And then this is Summit, which turns into Overbrook, which is my house, which is only a house on Overbrook, on this side of the paper road. And I'm trying to get just this section here, so that, and, and Liberty Township wants me to, to do this. And I've been going through everywhere I have attorney, I'm going to have Attorney Nader do it. I also have the, um, survey getting done. And it's, it's not an inexpensive process, but I'm trying to do it because Liberty wants to clean it up, you know. Also for myself, I bought the house at, not knowing any of this. And, and so because of that, I found out, I found out later, so Jim is zoning. I've talked to everyone, I've been at their meetings, they're all, excuse me, on, on board for wanting that part to get vacated because it cleans up their area. They're even selling me this owner of this property here. I'm, I'm actually getting that done right now. And, um, so my questions were, were, is that something that's going to be able to be done with you guys? I know you don't have much in the game.
It's the prosecutor who could, I think, elaborate on this, uh, situation. I think we had a similar last week, Bill.
Right.
Can you, can you give them some information on that?
Yeah, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's office. I, I think the big thing that we, the big thing that we have to tell people is to make sure that you have the ability to get the township on board. Because with a township road, they will have to pass a resolution essentially authorizing, before the commissioners will have jurisdiction to handle it. Now, that being said, sounds like you're on your way to, to, to hire Attorney Nader to do it. Um, I think that that's a, a good step because basically there's going to be the petition process. That petition will be brought before the commissioners. Uh, I believe there's a step where the county engineer weighs in on the offense of, oh, as far as any county transit, trains or county roads. And then the commissioners will have it on their agenda ultimately to approve or reject. But I, like I said, the, the important thing that I like to tell people from the county's perspective is, you know, as soon as you can get the township trustees to adopt a resolution saying that they have no objection, the better for you, because that's going to be something that these guys are going to need to see when it comes before the Board of Commissioners.
So, uh, what I was going to do is have, um, and I know everybody on the board. I live right, right across the street from them, I know Toby, I know Tom Weaver, President. The, I have everybody that's, you know, on board, they all want, they're the ones that want me to do this, but it's not an inexpensive procedure, so I don't want to, the reason I came to the meeting is that I didn't want to get started totally on it, you know, and wind up, you know, thousands of dollars in some that nobody thinks is going to be able to be done, so.
What about the planning commissioners, do they have to get involved in that at all?
I don't recall if they're yet in the process, they may be.
I think they are.
I will say this, you know, and I can't speak for the commissioners, they have their own decisions to make with road vacation. But historically, the only time I've seen a road vacation on a paper road like this get hung up is when township pulled up-
Township that they want, and they, they, they want it.
Yeah.
But, so the, the two main questions that I had, in light of that I get all the way through that process, was there's, there's two, two, two lots that are in front of me. One I'm going to own, so I'll get both sides of that paper road. The, the second lot is owned by a Don Marie, which we're friends, and he's more than willing to sign over that part, but I can't seem to figure out how to get that done. Like what paper, what do I need to-
Well, what I would say with township road vacation is generally, generally in the township, the property owners own to the center line of the road. The road, the paper road is just an easement for the township for transportation. So when that road vacation, assuming it goes through, when that property then reverts to the property owners, that would be-
Well, she'll get half, I'll get half.
Yeah, so what you would do then is you'd need to probably work through Attorney Nader or somebody else that does property work privately, and then talk to him about maybe, whether it's a formal easement that gets recorded over that property for a driveway, whether it's some sort of other ownership interest, but there'd have to be something that you and the neighbor would work out on that.
Right, so that, would that be after the fact of everything, then I would try to do it, like after I get this done and that, that gets vacated, he gets his half, I get my half, then I can kind of-
Probably, although, you know, I would, I would lean on your attorney for that question because-
He doesn't have it, he didn't have it.
There probably would be, there's, truthfully, there's no problem with you starting to talk about that and getting those things worked out ahead of time.
Right.
But it wouldn't be formalized probably until the road vacation was done.
So, um, back, back to like Liberty, like with Liberty, what I was going to do is have all the trustees write up something saying that they want it done, they do want it done.
Well, you need a resolution from them.
A resolution.
Have them pass a resolution.
Oh, they have-
After meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, well, that's no problem.
And, but I'd also, I would check with the planning commission also, just, just to get all your ducks in a row here. Let them, let them know exactly what you want to do, and ask them, if there's any, anything else that you need to do.
Right.
They're, they're down here on, uh, on Market Street.
I should be able to call them.
Yeah, and I'd stop, I'd stop in and present with them and just make sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, I'm just trying to make sure before I go, I'm already into quite a bit, you know, but I just don't want to get too far. I know I, I want to get, after I get that far, I want to have them look over it before I do the three pages so that I'm not in a position of paying five hundred every time I turn around.
Have the township do your resolution, check with the planning commission, that's what I would do. First two steps, and then go.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Gives me some food to thought, for sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Mike?
I've got two quick things.
Yeah.
Last week, Julie Green was here regarding the CDVG grant.
I know what a wind up is.
I talked to Julie about that.
Yeah.
Trumbull County, we could try, I can apply for it probably with the commissioners for the DD decline, which would be at Stark's clients. We could possibly get money from the CDVG grant through this, possibly fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. My question is, do you want me to go to these meetings and apply for it? And if you do, I will, but tell me not, because more than likely, it's going to be under the commission.
This is for the building imperiums?
No, CDVG is for transportation.
Oh, transportation.
Yeah, you can use it for transportation.
Yes.
So go, go to the meetings and see.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that's why I wanted to.
And that would supplement what we're taking out of the general fund?
Correct.
Yes, definitely, that's-
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that's the reason I was, you know, so that's something I would, go to the meetings, find out how to apply for it, and take it from there. The second thing-
Community development and block rent.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you say CDVG, but I just wanted to make sure.
Community development block rent, yeah.
Thank you. Alex, you have been brought to the board.
Sorry, Mike, so, the last thing I have, Mike, so, my Trumbull County Transit, I talked to you before about NeoRide and what we do there. NeoRide is doing something called an Easy Connect. Easy Connect is like a one-stop place. We're at the point now that, um, I'm working with Easy Connect or working with NeoRide, that by phones will roll over to WRTA. So anytime I'm on the phone or I don't answer, WRTA, well, somebody at WRTA will pick them up, take a message, or answer the questions. I got to go and train them. But they'll either pick it up, send you a message, or answer the question themselves and go from there. Just want to let you know that it is in the works, it doesn't cost anything to do this. Right now is, not a pilot program, but right now it's going to start from eleven-thirty to four-thirty. They'll be my backup, my phone. Presently, the person from NeoRide is working with our IT department to see how to roll the phones over. That's where that's at. I just wanted to let you know that also, that, that way no phone calls will be missed, so.
That's that thou- thousand dollars.
That's a thousand dollars.
I was gonna ask about that.
Right, so that's that thousand dollars that we, that you put, what we put out to my NeoRide now. Because there's grants for all of this, it will not cost us anything. I mean, she's got money in this thing for the next five years. We're good to do this for the next five years, or it's gonna be a rollover back, back of my calls, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, I have a, one, one quick thing here. We replaced the vending machines downstairs with the marketplace that we have. And I've got complaints from Family Court, court across the street, nine-one-one center, um, where the vending machines that are there now are less than adequate, same old vendor we, we dealt with before. We don't have any contracts with them. The machine's just been there for years and years. But people getting ripped off of the machine, not having the supplies updated. With the service we got from AVI downstairs, I, I had an AVI go to the court, Family Court, JFS, Ag Center and nine-one-one where we have the other old machines. And they, um, they went and looked at them and they wanna replace all the machines that are there with new modern machines, with modern technology to take credit cards and, uh, beverages in one and foods in the other. Um, so I just wanted a second from somebody here to be able to do that, to get the permission to switch over.
I'll second that. I mean, they're, they're, they've been handling all these well.
The other, the other one, we don't have any contract. Nobody knows how they got there, where they've been there. We just, they're just there, count them for years and, uh, did some research.
Bring that up on your agenda tomorrow, or is that?
I, I just need a second from somebody here. Doesn't have to be voted on officially.
I mean, AVI, they're the leader in vending machines, I mean.
And they've provided us great service downstairs and, and I think these other.
Whose machines are there in there now? Does anybody know?
Oh, I don't know.
Master Nick is the name of the company. And, you know, we've had, we've had problems before. We've called. They've taken care of the problems a little bit. Like when downstairs, when I first got here, there were like six post-it notes on the machine of people that got ripped off. And when, and I went to go get something, I hit like forty-two and number twenty-one went off. I said, what the hell? And they, the people downstairs was kinda laughing. They said they have, does it all the time. The machine's always broken. I said, well, why, why were we putting up with this? So that's where we initiated, looking at AVI and they came in, they gave us the whole marketplace thing at no cost to us and, uh.
Or contract or anything like that that we have to worry about?
There is none.
There is.
Yeah, I don't believe we have any contract.
There is no contract.
And there is no cost to the county, so it's not something that we've really ever, uh, had before with vending machines.
Commissioners, Alex, Stephen, John C. Bush, Human Resources Department. Not that I had anything to do with this, but I had to learn pretty quickly, uh, because, so I had nothing to do with the upfront or choosing of AVI or any of that, to be quite honest with you. However, Job and Family Services and other places we're putting in, you know, I don't wanna call them complaints, but concerns to county human resources that, you know, you have this nice stuff here, but to your point, we have junk over here and we feel that's a little bit unfair. Um, so, uh, somebody from Job and Family Services did come over to meet with myself. I had reflected whatever service agreement there was with AVI to see what this looks like. It's a zero dollar cost to the county. It literally is just saying, we're putting our machines in here and we make a percentage off of the profit that we, you know, off the goods, obviously. And that's how that works, so.
Now, that being said, I mean, if the commissioners wanted to go for some sort of, you know, comparison, there's, there's nothing to stop you guys from doing that, but.
But you're not paying anything. So what are you comparing? I guess it's price of their food? I mean, you know what I mean?
Right.
If we're not paying anything, how is it a competitive bid?
And this was something where that company had changed hands a few times. It used to be Courtney and I think, and it, it, this goes back, as far as we can tell, at least fifteen years, maybe more. And they, they said some of the machines are over the court office. They've just been there forever and they don't, um, they've had, they had issues with those ones too. And then Judge Blue Dorance, who brought it to my attention, he said, hey, this machine's never working here. We call them, takes forever. So I'm not knocking the services, you know, not trying to discredit another company. Just the service we got from, uh, the company we installed downstairs has been awesome. And, uh, so in those areas, I'd like to replace them with the, with AVI. And, and AVI did come out and look at them and they're ready to go for it if I can get the commissioners to agree to go ahead and allow me to do that. Okay, so that's done.
Well, what do we got?
Commissioners, just, oh, just to remind you, oh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, public hearing tomorrow night. Or State Line Road is at the Brookfield Times Administration Building.
We will be there.
And I do need signatures from Commissioner Hernandez and Bernard.
Okay. Well, we need a motion to adjourn.
Well, bef- before we do that.
You got something?
Because it is still, the elephant in the room. Um, I had talks with Gary this week over what we can do to try to avoid any type of a price increase on water rates. And I don't wanna open the can and warm something now, but we need to schedule some form of meeting to go over this, to understand it, to understand the whole big thing. I don't want Gary to be the sacrificial lamb to come in here and try to, I mean, that's his job, is to make sure that we stay in the black. And it's not his doings of all these price increases that were added to us, um, by the wholesaler and the, the cost of doing business. So what I would like to have happen is request that we, we end up having a special meeting with Gary and his crew to do a presentation, kinda like the water hearings that we do. Give those, this new board, bring us up to speed on the history of the water districts, their last rate increases, when we had them, why we had them, and give us a water one-on-one for the three commissioners and give your professional staff their chance to educate us so we don't vote or even bring up a vote or even discuss a vote on anything. And we can help work together as a board to try to eliminate or reduce any potential rate increases that we made to incur. To sit here and say, we're never gonna raise water rates in Troma County would be irresponsible. It's like saying we'll never raise rates on stamps ever again in America. We're never gonna raise rates on, uh, vehicle maintenance or anything. We know costs go up on things. So it would be irresponsible to say that. But I think what this board has mandated, and I think the way the three of us work together and what we've all promised the taxpayers too, is we're not gonna ask for anything additional from anybody until we are proven to the one-hundred percent that all costs are cut in areas that can be cut and that we can reduce as much fat as we can before we even think of going to taxpayers for anything. So, none of us here wanna raise any taxes. None of us here wanna raise any fees. But we all have to run this as a business. Also, we are the, the chief executive officers of this county. And if there are costs in any department, in any service, for us to be able to even entertain getting involved and rolling our sleeves up with this, we need to be educated on it first. And I think that needs to happen before you or your department hit us with any type of any asks or increases or anything of that. We need to understand that. Just like Mike, Mike gave us the transportation one-on-one today of the history, the contracts and, you know, it took up forty-five minutes, but it was worth it.
Sorry about that.
No, it was worth it. We needed to learn that stuff. Diane's done the same with us, the senior levee. Uh, Bill is gonna have to give us maintenance stuff before he heads out the door that we don't understand yet. Um, Gary and Bob and their crew there, I think, needs to have something with us where we can sit down here, the history, and, and go through every little bit of your business that involves us financially and how we need to understand that.
All right, well, what, what kind of time do we look at? Are we gonna do it in a workshop, before a workshop, uh, after a commissioner's meeting? Do you want it Tuesday, Wednesday?
I'd be interested in doing it for, you know, during a workshop, uh, instead of, I mean, not in a workshop, but. Commissioner Bernard, you would have some say in this, before a workshop in the morning where we can?
I, I've been out, you, you gave me the tour of the facilities. I don't know if you gentlemen have been out to the plant and you've seen it, you've seen everything.
Oh, no, not to the plant. I've been to the.
I think that's all part of it too, to see the upgrades that have been done out there, to see the water treatment, to see the water.
The water separate from sewer, the wastewater treatment plants. Yeah, you got, did you get a tour of that?
I did.
It was right after we finished and so we were, um.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know about, I don't, I don't care when, when we have the meeting. All right, but you know what? Since you brought it up, here's my problem, okay? We've seen bulk rate increases for ten years, correct?
Yes, sir.
And now, twenty-twenty-five, all of a sudden, it's an emergency that we need a rate increase when your department has known for the last ten years that we've needed a rate increase, okay? That's my problem. I walk through the door and you say we need a rate increase. Why didn't you tell the other boards they needed a rate increase, okay? Why is it on this board that it's an emergency? Wasn't it an emergency last year, the year before that, in the last four or five years? That's my problem.
Commissioner, in two thousand fifteen, under the prior sanitary engineer, after he was put on, when a supplier would increase their bulk water rate to us, we would do a pass-through increase. Let's say the city analysis, we're gonna take up your, uh, bulk water cost by fifteen cents per thousand gallons. We would put a resolution on the agenda saying, okay, everyone in the, deserved by the gallons of water under these agreements. Increases go up by fifteen percent, you know, penny for penny trade-off. Between two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty, there was a sanitary engineer here that wouldn't do it. When we get to two thousand and twenty and I'm put in charge of it, that's when Bob comes to me and shows me that, hey, we are getting killed here by, on our water department because we didn't do these pass-through increases and we are lacking from funds.
So where have you been since twenty-twenty till now though?
That's when we.
I mean, why, why is it a, why is it an emergency in twenty-twenty-five and it wasn't an emergency in twenty-twenty-four and it wasn't an emergency in twenty-twenty-three? And you know it was emergency because you guys combined all the water districts to take all that money out of there.
Right. In twenty-twenty, after I was put in charge, Bob shows me the financial conditions. That's when we did a rate study.
Did you come to the commissioners and ask for a rate structure?
Yes, it was on the agenda to have a rate study performed. We had it performed and it, and it stayed quite a while to do and it was at the end of twenty.
But did you ask for a rate, rate increase?
Yes.
Did you ask in twenty-twenty-one?
It was, uh.
Did you ask in twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Did you ask in twenty-twenty-three?
Uh, I, I can't say every year here, Commissioner, without, but there was, we've shown that to you before.
Well, the last rate structure that I.
And then once we, once we got the rate study completed, we presented it to the commissioners in December of twenty-twenty-two. That was the formal presentation of that.
And did they vote on it?
No, they did not. They, it was not put on the agenda at their choosing.
Well, I have two weight rate adjustments here. I have one where you had MS consultant do one.
Yes.
And they said from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-six, the rate should go, uh, from ten-fifty to eleven, eleven-ten.
Yes.
And then you, you gave me a new one saying in twenty-twenty-five, it should be twelve-fifty. So our rate structure that you paid for said that it should only go to eleven-ten. And now you're telling me it should go to twelve-fifty. So we paid for one who said eleven-ten and then you bring in one that says twelve-fifty and then it's my understanding that in, in twenty-twenty-six, we're gonna have to raise it again.
All right, Commissioner Bob, I'm gonna enter my controller. He, he can explain that portion to you better than I can.
So, great question and we had hoped that the MS rate study would have been implemented, but that was done in twenty-twenty-one. We had bulk water increases in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five that were obviously not taken into consideration with that rate. Had we gone back ten years and been passing the rate increases on as they occurred, we wouldn't be sitting here.
Even five years, we wouldn't be sitting here. But it wasn't done in five years. You, you know, you guys wanna blame somebody else, but you know what? I wanna blame the whole department.
Well, this is.
For not, for not coming to the board to say, we need these rate increases.
I will say this is, as you put it, kicking the can down the road. The can has been kicked and kicked and kicked and kicked. We're now at the end of the road. We're facing a cliff.
Yeah, but it, it should have been at the end of the road last year and the year before that. Now I walk through and you say, here, it's an emergency. And, and you guys know, knew it was an emergency when you combined all the water districts. And the only reason you did that was to take all the money out to save a rate increase then. And now all that money's gone and now we have an emergency because you used all, you used everybody's money in the district to, to save off a, a rate increase. And that's where I have a problem.
And, I mean, I don't think any of us here are even arguing that point. So in twenty-two, you have the rate increase that was proposed to the commissioners by sanitary, which was not implemented. In twenty-three, it's.
And why do you think it wasn't implemented?
I was not part of that.
Yeah, but wha- wha- what's your, what's your gut feeling?
Well, it, do any commissioners wanna pass rate increases? I, I mean, and I'm not being, I'm trying not to.
We don't want to.
Nobody, we don't like to come to you. You don't wanna go, I mean.
Yeah, but you're coming to me now saying it's an emergency. And, and in fact, it was an emergency in twenty-twenty-two, but what you did was you combined all those districts to get you to here.
Which is what, I mean, that's, so the commissioners in twenty-two.
And that's my problem. So now everybody has to pay for, for, for them not increasing the rates two years ago or three years ago or four years ago. And then you're bringing it and putting it on my shoulders to say, okay, now, now we're gonna double everybody's rates. And then next year, you're gonna come back and say, you know what, Commissioner, now we need more money.
And, and I guess the double is, there must be confusion. Well, Howland has, I, I talked to the administrator yesterday from Howland. Howland, where I'm a resident of, would end up with an eighty percent increase. The vast majority of people are gonna see in the thirty percent rate increase. So thirty percent is quite different than double. Um, but in twenty-two, we brought it to the commissioners. It was not put on the agenda. In twenty-three, the commissioners, uh, decided to combine the districts. Like we can't combine.
Under whose suggestion was it combined?
That was me. I, I wasn't here until twenty-three and I, I, just like you. I come in and they said, we gotta raise our rates. And I said, I just got here. You know, I don't wanna see you raise rates until you show me you cut every penny and you combine every service.
Did they cut anything?
They saved on, oh, they, they saved a lot.
What, what did they cut?
Well, I, I would argue at, at this juncture, we've been cutting for six years in a row. We probably should be increasing our spending as opposed to cutting.
Well, I mean, what have you cut?
Um, I have, I mean, you could look at our salary. It has increased, I think, ten percent over ten years. So we, we're going one percent a year. Um, I mean, and I'm not sure with HR, what our contracts have gone up two or three or four percent. So we've managed to keep that under control, um.
Well, we have been putting off maintenance items.
We're, we're deferring.
Like I, I know we have over a hundred hydrants, hydrants that need to be replaced out there. Uh, we've been holding off things like that, holding off on things like, uh, the Brookfield tank. Needs repainted. It, it's, you can't have this, uh, million-dollar vehicle truck.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I agree if that's cutting, that's just not doing the maintenance work that you should be doing. So that's gonna come up and bite us at some point in time too.
Right, and that's what the other thing we were holding off on until we get a rate increase.
When you spend twenty thousand dollars for this and then you eliminate that, you don't spend twenty thousand dollars for not doing maintenance work. To me, that's not cutting, that's just not doing the job.
Right, well, we don't have.
Eventually, we're gonna have to do that.
Yes.
Okay, but I, I, I mean, I.
I'm not saying we don't replace every hydrant that's broke, but they were on a schedule. Some of the older ones, we would like to pluck. They're all operational out there now. They, they still are. But there are some older ones that need to be plucked out of there and replaced.
You know, I, I mean, these people on fixed incomes, they can only stand so much, guys.
Well, they, they still be the same rate, Commissioner, with all due respect. If you're the previous engineer, yeah, if we'd have been passing these rates on every year, we, they wouldn't be asking for rate increases. We would just have the natural. We'd still be at the same price we're paying now. And people would have paid more for the last ten years. Those same people on the fixed income would have been paying more every year incrementally for the last ten years.
Yeah, but a little bit better than a hundred dollars a month, I.
But it's still the same though. They would have been paying it for the same, they got off, ten years, they didn't have to pay anything.
Well, I think, here's the way I look at it. They're asking me to do, do the job that the past board should have been doing.
I agree, and the past, the past sanitary engineer from twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty, Randy Smith should have been doing it too. This doesn't start with Mr. Newbrow. This started in twenty-fifteen when Rex B. retired.
And neither did Gary Newbrow. He didn't approve those.
I brought him. I, I did a rate study since I got there.
And, and there were previous boards. Like I said, we are, being with the sins of our fathers, the people before us, going back thirty years, we can look in many departments and see that. Where the can kicked down the road thing, it absolutely has happened. It's happened. We can look at past boards and see that. There were two, two boards, three boards since twenty-fifteen, three different boards, and none of them did anything. Now we're up to this point here, like they said, there is no more road to kick the can down. We're to cliff. So, I mean, they're not lying to us in their professionalism with what they're doing. It's just they have been working under the guidelines of the previous boards before them on what to do. And much like you, when I came in, I said, we're not, I don't wanna rate increase. No way, no how. Prove it to me. Better show me every which way possible and then come back to us with a rate increase after you've cut costs as much as you possibly can.
The only thing they've showed me is, is they haven't raised the rate for ten years and now they want me to do it.
All right, I understand that. I understand that.
Okay, so I think we just.
You guys got two votes, raise the rates.
Well.
No, I don't say I wanna raise rates either.
I don't think, listen, I, I'm on board with you, Commissioner Bernard, okay? I wasn't here and I, and I would agree. There's a disparity. However, we're at a crossroads, so we're.
However, we're at a crossroads, so we're gonna need to, unfortunately, it's not a popular subject matter. But we're gonna have to make some kind of a decision because if we don't, this thing's gonna explode. Nobody wants a rate increase. I don't wanna rate increase. You don't wanna rate increase, but at some point, we're gonna have to do something about it. And I don't know, are those numbers, the numbers that we need or are those numbers, can those numbers be reduced? Can we reduce those numbers? I, I, I'm just asking.
I, I agree with you. I haven't seen proof yet, like I said, until you show me you've squeezed every dime and every nickel, then bring it to us. I haven't seen that yet myself either. So don't, don't think for a second I'm gonna raise anything I don't.
So I would say last month for January, we lost eighty three, eighty four thousand dollars in operating. I mean, so we've just lost another near a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but you've been losing for years. You've just been supplementing it with that money that, when you combine those districts. So, so, so let's, let's be perfectly clear on this. You've been losing.
Commissioner, there, there was a pot of money of all the districts. There were seven of them. We had some really bad ones.
Yeah, but they were separate. They were separate and then you guys combined.
Yeah, like Warren Township put down there, the Warren Township district, it lost them entire. So that leaves maybe, what do we got? A, a couple hundred residential connections in there. And we're having to flush a lot of that water. Now, if we would have kept that on its own, that rate down there for those people in one of the, um, I, 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 uh, less affluent areas of this entire county. We would have needed rate increases from, uh, what, what is Warren Township? Seven fifty four a thousand to about twenty bucks a thousand in order to break even. Now, how could you possibly impose that on someone?
Well, how did they get that way?
Because we lost Denman Tire.
And, and who put Denman Tire in? Who, who paid the cost for that water line for Denman Tire?
That was well before any of our times.
Who paid for that water line?
Was that in your time?
No, 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 but, but I, well, look it up. See, see who paid for that water line.
Okay, but, uh, people connected into it since then that were residential and after they left, we had to, we had to keep flushing water down there. So combining the districts was the best solution, not only for that one, but for somebody.
All you did is kick the can down the road. That's where we're at.
Well, we're making it fair for everyone. Why, why should.
In your opinion, we are.
Well, why should someone in, let's say, in the Bolandell neighborhood pay more for the same service as someone in a more affluent area of Howland? But to me, that has never been fair.
It's just like any other county service. We're not gonna charge someone for a ride because they live in Champion more than what they are, need a ride because they live in Howland. That's, that's not fair. I mean, all citizens deserve the same fair treatment and, and combining costs to make that happen, it's gotta be somewhat reasonable. Yeah.
There's, there's a possible argument for water and sewer customers. If somebody lives the first house before our sewage treatment plant, when they flush their toilet, it could go a hundred feet into our plant. Why do they contribute for pump stations that are ten miles away from where they are? Like, we have one cost, so by combining the districts, we're essentially cost sharing throughout the county. So every county resident is paying the same. Some residents are benefited, some are not. Everybody that lives real close to Mosquito Creek could have a cheaper rate because they're, everything is close.
Well, that was such a good thing. Why, why didn't they do that years ago? Why didn't they just do it two years ago?
Well, I think that there's been a misnomer. It's been being done in our metro sewer district for fifty years. Um, they, the Hubbard district, the Hubbard used to have its own sanitary district and that was combined into our metro sewer district. So it's, it's been done, the metro sewer district was formed from multiple smaller sewer districts throughout the history of sanitary engineers department, much before some of us.
Right.
So it, it just came to a point where Metro and Mosquito became one and then it was suggested to do that for the water. So every county person is paying the same.
But here's my, here's my, my problem still. When you combined all the water districts, you still knew that that wasn't enough to sustain that. And that you needed a rate increase and, and, and you never went to the commissioners and said, let's raise the rates, okay? You waited, you waited until twenty twenty five, so Mr. Hernandez and I came, walked through the door. We were here ten days and you said, now we have an emergency.
That, that's all incorrect. They did, they didn't.
That emergency existed before we got here.
They did ask in twenty twenty two and that board said no and then put on the agenda. They asked in twenty three and we told them to.
It should have went on the agenda. Why wasn't it put on the agenda?
Talk to the three, three previous people before the three of us at this table.
I said, now put it on. I'll vote no. I don't care.
Sorry, um, Alex, I do have some questions. So, and I think that maybe how we need to look at this moving forward potentially is, first of all, I think you need to outline to the board of commissioners immediately what will happen, okay? We're talking about the past and I hear Rick, I hear Commissioner Hernandez, I hear Commissioner Bernard, I hear Commissioner White. I think we're in a little bit of a conundrum right now. So what will happen quantifiably, okay? The board of commissioners needs to understand liability and risk in the future. That's what I'm here to tell you. That's my job as HR director. As I need Alex to risk me and ensure for the county. What will happen? Are we going to be sued by Niles and Youngstown? Are we gonna be sued by NVSD? What's gonna happen? Oh, you don't need to answer that here, but I need you to put something together.
I can actually tell you that.
I don't even wanna know the answer right now and I don't think they do either. I think that you need to put that together in your presentation, okay? The next thing is, you need to present where we've cut and what we can still cut. I know from looking at your costs, from the operational costs, there is no amount of employees that you could cut. I'm gonna say that right here, right now. You could cut your entire department and that still won't give you the two million dollars in the water department. There's water and sewer, okay? I've done that research. Two different departments. A, you can't cut sewer because they're funded by, they're funded differently. They're not funded by the water fund, okay? Sewer employees, if you cut them, you, you, board commissioners, no pun intended, you're SOL if you know what that means, rebetween lines. You cannot cut that. If you cut the water employees, you still could not cut enough employees to make up that difference. And then who is doing the meter reading? Who is doing the other things, okay? So where else can you cut Bob and Gary? Have you looked at, you know, contracted services? Have you looked at all, all those other things? You need to look at all of that and, and really do a deep dive into that because we do need to present to the board of commissioners where we can cut.
And collecting our bills. How much debt do we have out there that people owe us?
I, I, well, and I know somebody's working on that within your department, right? Not Attorney Blair is going back after people who have funds that they're not paying. So that can be baked in there as well. The last but not least, has anybody gone to Niles and Youngstown and asked, can we renegotiate this bulk cost rate? Can we do something here? Because we're running, we're, we're at the point where we may not be able to potentially provide services to residents of Trumbull County. That's the third thing. Then additionally, when I'm looking at your gain and loss, this is something that I really wanna stress here. Your biggest increase was between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. That was quite relevant and in recent. That was the biggest, where we actually went up by almost a million dollars just in that year alone. And if that's the trajectory of where we're heading in the future, we need to be assessing that immediately. What are our plans? I know.
No, no, that's, I mean, Alex laid it out wonderfully.
Well, I don't wanna lay it out. This is.
Well, well, it, it's nice to lay it out, but you know what?
We gotta action.
Well, you know what? It should have been laid out to the previous boards. When I hear how great everything was and, and, and then when I go out there and raise these rates, people are gonna say, I thought everything was great. I thought we had all this money. I thought all these rate structures were fine. When in fact, that's not true and that wasn't true.
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay?
I don't see that.
And that, that's my problem.
I guess the question is.
And now, now Mr. Hernandez and I come in here and they're gonna say, oh, you guys just raised your rates. Everything was fine. Well, it wasn't fine, but yet everybody said it was fine.
Yeah.
And they said it was fine because they didn't do anything about it. So.
Well, I just think that, I mean, I feel that that point.
Well, you know what? I have to make the rate increase, not you guys. And I'm the one that's gonna catch the flak. And I'm the one that has to tell that, that, that person on fixed income, your rates are going up. And they're gonna say why.
What was the huge, the increase? And I'm just curious.
And I'll tell you another thing, Commissioner, what the old board did, what they did to us, our sewer rates went up last year. And the board voted an increase in sewer rates and they didn't make it go into an effect until three years down the road. So that board wanted to get stuck with it. Guess who got stuck with that sewer rate increase? Me. When, when a board voted on it three years before I got there and then all of a sudden last January, everybody's rates go up ten dollars on sewer because the old board stuck it to us by throwing a grenade out there that didn't go off until they had a chance to run from it. And, and that's, that's the way government works with that. So, yeah, this, this stuff isn't just, this isn't new to government. That's what the old board had done us on sewer. So I feel what you're saying here. I understand totally what you're saying.
What did we gain? And I'm just curious, Alex, what did we gain by combining the districts? Because I see that the expense in bulk water costs went astronomically higher for the year twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. And our law, our net loss was way higher. So what did we gain and help us understand? Help the board understand what we need to do moving forward?
All right, well, yeah.
Cause if that's not working, we need to.
Well, we can put together a presentation. We're just trying to find out the time for it. We, we can go through.
I think supplies, administrative fees miscellaneous, probably some of that was shaved down. I would guesstimate from looking at this, by combining services. That was done. Supplies went down.
Com- combining the districts financially probably had little to no effect on our actual. I mean, there'd be no gains. It was just a financial, financial.
Right, sage from racing the rates.
Yes.
Yeah. Now, Commissioners Bill Danzo.
That's kicking the can.
Well, that's to, to prevent some of the smaller districts from going into the red, it was why that was done.
Yeah, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, just another piece of history here on this, so you guys can consider it. When this, one of the first times this really came up to the board was in twenty sixteen, actually, I think maybe twenty fifteen is when it came up. There was, uh, what we called the six hundred fund in the water sewer department. And the theory of the six hundred fund was each individual fund that was out there, each individual district paid a share into the six hundred fund for the administrative cost of the whole department. That was their share. What they discovered in twenty fifteen-ish, the end of twenty fifteen, is that that, that six hundred fund, there were certain districts that couldn't contribute enough to that six hundred fund to fund their share of the general operational cost of that department. That came to our office as a legal question on whether that was proper to have other districts bearing the cost of an, essentially insolvent district. I'll just use that word. I don't know. But we did as much research on it we could. We went and ended up going to the attorney general for an opinion on that. And in twenty sixteen, the attorney general came back with an opinion on that saying that, no, technically each district should be standing on its own financially. It was okay to have the six hundred fund, but one district really shouldn't be bearing the cost of another insolvent district. And in that opinion, the, the attorney general laid out a number of possibilities and I, I, I have a copy of that here. But essentially, the attorney general laid out the options of consolidating smaller districts that don't collect adequate revenues, um, increasing rates, um, or the appropriation of general fund money by the board of commissioners to cover the shortfall in those districts. So after that happened, I don't know, it ended up taking quite a bit longer before the, the consolidation ended up happening. But that's just the, the legal historical context of back in twenty fifteen, that's what had occurred for those questions based on the funding. How, how should this funding be working? What should be happening with these districts? And, uh, like I said, I just wanted you to have that historical legal context there.
When was our last rating increase?
Uh, two thousand fifteen. Uh, some of them weren't, there's seven districts here. Two thousand fifteen was the most recent. Some of them go back to even before that. And we used to have to do seven different rate studies for seven different districts. But to me, it's just, uh, an exercise in stupidity.
And it was last passed by the commissioners in two thousand eleven. They did.
Yeah, two thousand eleven was the last one to approve those increases. They were gradual through two thousand fifteen.
So now they want you to make up for those last.
Fourteen years.
Yep, it's all on you. And we got an emergency now, Danny.
But the, the good thing is, that's fourteen years of people.
I don't see any good out of it.
Someone's people are dead, never had to have an increase. Anyone that died in the last fourteen years, never had to pay an increase.
The ones that are living are gonna have to make up for it.
Unfortunately. Well, not make up, but bring us up to even, bring us up to par.
It's not even par. Next year, you're gonna have to raise it again. They, they're telling, they may not be telling you that.
Well, we should have raised it every year for fourteen years.
Well, commissioners, what we would like to do is once we do, if we can get this set, when we get a pass through, we need to put it on the agenda immediately. When a bulk water supplier tells us this, this has gone up. And, and Alex, our, those bulk water rates are based on twenty year service area agreements. They basically say that they're gonna pay this percentage of our inside rate. And when the cities raise their inside rate on their own customers, then that's when we are affected. That's when ours get adjusted too.
And there's nothing we can do.
That's how all the service area agreements are, are structured. I, I, I can't say we, when we go into the negotiations on these, yes, we're going in doing everything we can to get the lowest rate we possibly can.
When is the next negotiation? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, well, we just, uh, finalized the Niles agreements for Mineral Ridge, Howland and, uh, uh, Southeast. Uh, Warren maybe.
Do we get to look at those?
On water, I, I, they have three of the districts. We gotta look at those too.
Uh.
What's that, Commissioner?
Did the commissioners get to look at those?
The, the service area agreements?
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we approve those or do you approve?
You, you approve them.
Okay.
We bring, we bring them to you.
So when was the last one approved?
It was, uh, for water, the last one was with the city of Niles and it was for the Howland district, the Mineral Ridge district and the Southeast.
And when was that?
I wanna say within the past two years.
And I think this is past, past.
So we haven't seen it. We don't even know what it is.
Well, we, we pay point eight eight percent of the inside rate for the Southeast district. And, but the Mineral Ridge is the higher one. It's one point two something. And I don't know off the top of my head what it is for Howland, but those are all negotiated, uh, with.
Okay, when, when a city says that their inside rate cost them so much money, is there any way that we look at that to verify that that's really what it's costing them? And they're not charging us for some outside stuff that they're throwing in on the inside? Or do we just take their word for it and say, well, that's their inside rate?
So the inside rate's what they charge their inside customers.
Yeah, but can we take a, do you take a look at that?
I mean, they just.
I mean, I mean, the inside rate is, is what it costs them too, you know?
Well, that's, I, I mean, when you say cost, that's their charge to their internal.
And normally, the inside rate to them is lower than what the, our rate is to us.
So depending on, I think Gary just said, we're paying point eight eight of an inside rate for.
The Southeast because we had such big volume out there.
We're paying less than the inside rate. But then we can be charged, I think there's an O R C statute that says we can be charged, what? Is it up to one point five?
Yeah, the maximum they can charge us is one point five of the inside rate. And that's per O R C.
And they can charge that.
And some do. Newton Falls.
Well.
Uh, and is Warren a one point five? No. I, I don't think they're a one point five.
But Newton, well, Newton Falls actually passed a resolution for high volume users.
Oh, yeah.
And Trumbull County is the only high volume user. So they actually raised, so when we did the blueprint project out there, Gary based it all on a rate of four, four point.
Yeah, yeah. The existing rate that they gave us and then they increased it substantially after we built the project.
This year, they just increased our rate to nine ten. So we're charging maybe nine twenty three to residents and we're buying it for nine ten and we're flushing. So when we have to bring water quality up, we're literally taking nine dollars and ten cents per thousand and flushing it out of a hydrant. So we're losing money every month just on bulk water and revenue from our customers. Like, we could have no employees, no lab testing, no vehicles, no anything and we're losing money.
And right now, we're buying water from Newton Falls, city of Warren.
No. You know, yes.
City of Niles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we buy from Warren, out of Mosquito Lake, right?
Niles, Warren and Newton Falls and Youngstown supplements the Mineral Ridge.
And then Aqua Ohio Services on their own. We don't buy from Aqua Ohio.
We don't, we don't have anything interconnected with Aqua Ohio at all. No.
So our customers, our providers to those.
Where are their, where are their, where are their water rates compared to these other ones?
They're higher than ours, uh, Aqua Ohio. And, and we don't even have an interconnected pipe bulk water from them anymore. As a matter of fact, they.
What's Aqua Pennsylvania?
This is Aqua Ohio. Well, Aqua Ohio, Aqua Pennsylvania.
Same thing.
Yeah. Uh, but their rates back in twenty two for Maisory customers, they were thirteen something back in twenty two. I'm not sure, but they're probably higher than that now. Um, and I know their Mahoney County customer, that's.
Somebody said their quality of their water is a lot better too, though.
Oh, no, that's Yanango Water. We, we watching that for years out there. That NVSD water is the most, the best you're ever gonna find.
We did?
The NVSD water is the best.
The best?
So M V S D water is the best, yes.
Oh, I was just thinking about who's bad.
Well, they're as far as chlorine, yeah, chlorine residual, less disaffection byproducts, trihalamethanes. Hal代水化 gases, I mean, it keeps the quality of the water within EPA limits for much longer shelf life than any other supplier. And Aqua Ohio, their water, it's, they were ranked M V S D as the best, then Warren, then Aqua, then Newton Falls, if you had to rank them.
And I'd recommend too, I did the tour of M V S D, where they took you in the dam, they took you through the whole treatment thing. The place is meticulous. You can eat off any floor in that facility. It's unbelievable, the cleanliness of that place. And then again, there, you know, they sell the water to Niles, which passes it on us. They need to fix their dam right now. They're asking for fifty-five million dollars to fix their dam. Well, they've got thirty million of it apparently in a fund that's coming out. They're gonna need twenty million more. Are they, how are they gonna pay for that? And are they gonna raise rates on Niles again, and then Niles is gonna have to raise it on us again? Just to pay for the integrity and structure of the dam. There's books written on water wars across America. Whoever has the water has the power and has the money. And right now, Niles, Warren, Newton Falls, they got us when it comes to having the water. We're their customer. Fortunately, like Gary said, we can only pay one point five percent more than what their customers pay.
Yes.
So they can't gouge us that much by inflating the rates too much, but still, they're making one point five percent off of us. Passing the cost off to us.
And they cannot increase our rate without putting some pain on their own, on their own customers. They can't. That's another thing that works out. And every water customer in this county has gone through these rate increases. The cities of Warren, Niles, Newton Falls, and, well, Harbor we're not connected to. But they have all undergone rate increases except for Trumbull County customers. Everybody else has seen water rate increases except for the county customers.
And Commissioners, I just wanna make sure that you understand this and that you guys, when you do your project going forward, that you really hone in on this. The future rate reviews don't look any better. So according to your research in 2018, the City of Youngstown put a twenty-year rate schedule, taking their bulk water from four twenty-one to eleven sixty-three. That's a hundred, that's a twenty year. That's not just a twenty twenty-five increase, okay? We are talking for the substantial future. Quantitatively, you have to plan for this. Additionally, in 2024, the City of Warren put into effect at least only a five-year plan with six increases totaling fifty-two percent increase. So we know, for those getting the City of Warren, we have at least a five-year plan. We know with those getting out of the City of Youngstown, a twenty year. I mean, that's a huge gap of time.
Yes. Right. And what we did to combat that thing with the City of Youngstown, it was called the Mineral Ridge Hydraulic Improvement Project. Commissioner, were you here when we got that three million dollar grant from that house bill, eighty-eight? Anyway, all right, that was, anyway, that project was built so that we could supply the Mineral Ridge District with more water from Niles than what we got from the City of Youngstown, because Youngstown's bulk water is so expensive.
Correct.
And right now, we built the project and we're able to use less Youngstown water, but I wanna eliminate them completely. So right now, we are looking into, with my operators, where can we get a pump station put into that system? Where we can keep that pressure at the top, up at the higher elevation for the customers up there and turn off that valve from Youngstown. So those are the kind of cost-saving measures that we put into place. That Champion, that regionalization project that we go on, we have going on in Champion right now. That is there primarily to close the valve with their fault. Their water, what, they gouge us up to nine bucks a thousand now? Okay, we're gonna close that valve. We're gonna open the valve from the City of Warren. I mean, that is the primary driver for that project. That and the fact that we can keep our chlorine residual through with that Warren water much better than we can.
And that's all good.
To not get the violation.
And that's all good, Gary, but the problem is, the rates weren't raised. Now you're asking this board right now, boom, let's hit them, okay? And I'm the one that's gonna have to address all the water customers out there. Why did you raise our rates? Cause the passport didn't do their job. And you think they're gonna believe that?
Well, it's a true question.
When they've been here, everything's just fine down in the county.
But the answer to that question.
Well, where were you guys at? Where were you guys at at this stage of saying, where's the rate?
I brought it up to the Board of Commissioners on more than one occasion, and we need water rate increase. Commissioner, have you heard that since you have got here?
Twice, yes.
Well, you might have said it in, you might have said it in private, but you didn't say it in public.
No, it's done publicly. When we combined the rates, it was all through the newspaper, why we were combining the rates. That's when he came up and said, and that's where I publicly sat up there and said, we're not raising water rates until you show me you're cutting costs everywhere else. Once we see that, then come back. That's what I said here.
That's only two years. It's been ten years.
I understand that. I understand.
That's only two, two of ten.
We could sit and look at this spilled milk on the ground in a million different ways and criticize it. It doesn't get itself cleaned up that way.
I understand that.
That's what's on our shoulders now to do.
But you know what? I wanna hold everybody accountable, didn't do their job.
So I would say that the answer to you asking, why now? But ultimately, it's the rate increases from Newton Falls, it's the rate increases from Warren, it's the rate increases from Youngstown, it's the rate increases from Niles.
But even without those rate increases, you needed to raise them, and you didn't do it.
But if you look at your paper that I handed out, the change in our bulk water from 2015 to 2024 is one point eight million dollars higher. If we didn't have that, we lost one point five. So we've been able to maintain it. It's literally the bulk water from our suppliers. I mean, that is our biggest, our contracted services is up fifty-eight percent. But that amounts to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. One point eight million is from the other municipalities taking money from us, increasing our rates. So we should have been passing it through for the past ten years. No one disagrees with that. It didn't happen. Why it didn't happen, I think Gary went over it, but we are where we are today. And like I said before, the can has been kicked to the edge. So it's ultimately, Bill's not here, I mean, the O R C basically said sanitary engineers department comes to the board, recommends the rates, and it's up to the board to make the ultimate decision. So when Alex.
And that same board had the opportunities in the past years.
Yeah, well, we do not disagree with that, Commissioner.
Well, you were not operating in the red in the past years, right? Still on the black every year.
Yeah, last year was a tremendous loss. I mean, all the increases were hitting hard last year. But you had asked what happens, like, talking about risk.
Well, I, literally, I just think they need to know what's gonna happen.
When we went through the.
Oh, we know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Well, when we went through the sewer rate adjustment, we didn't have enough money to pay our bulk sewage treatment bills with the City of Warren. And the Commissioners, Gary and myself, we all were in court. Because Warren sued us over non-payment of bills. So if I stopped paying Warren's water, I don't know that I never, why would they not sue us? So I mean, I feel like if, once we can't pay our bills, it's either gonna be face potential litigation or I'll bring the bills in, Sheriff can pay them out of the general fund. Which is not what I think is.
That's not gonna happen.
We don't, we don't think that's the right thing, but ultimately, we're gonna have a shortfall.
But we didn't have a shortfall until this year.
Well, and.
Well, they knew they were in trouble, believe me.
We didn't have a savings account, but we didn't have a shortfall.
No, no, we, when I'm saying shortfall, we will have, we have half a million dollars left right now in our bank. So if we're gonna lose, as the weather heats up and bulk water usage goes up, we start losing a hundred and fifty thousand a month. You're looking at three and a half months. I mean, we'll have off zero dollars and I won't be able to pay bills. I mean, I'll be, I'll be literally hand to mouth with what we receive.
Well, and similar to our budget. We wish we had more money in the budget too. We don't have money to start saving money in our budget and taking some of the general fund and saving it and investing more in things. We gotta spend it. It covers the cost of the bills. It covers the cost of all the departments, it covers the cost of the sheriff, nine one one, everybody else. We've gotta spend it. We can't save. We're at that point now where we can't save in that department either, where in the past we have saved, where we've made a little bit of a profit, where we had a little bit of a buffer. So we've shaved the buffer down before we pass the cost on to the consumer, is what's happened in the past.
Correct. I mean, we had a balance.
We could have passed it on and then that's still on the savings account, which to me is irresponsible on the government.
I'm only gonna offer my two cents about it. We are a public utility, so I think running our balance down is a risky option to what could go wrong with our utility. I mean, we have.
But that risk has been there. That risk just didn't happen. That risk has been there.
Well, before this year, we had over two million dollars.
To me, to me, you're saying you're putting all the responsibility on this board. And I'm saying it shouldn't be on this board, it should be on the other boards, and you're putting the blame on this board.
Well, there's no blame.
There's no blame.
But he's saying, we did have, we did have two million in savings last year. We were operating with it, we pay all our bills and still have two million. That to me does show a fire sale, hurry up and raise rates.
When you combined all the districts, correct?
Well, that was our carryover from all the districts.
Right, right. So, yeah, right. So that's why you had the two million. You didn't have it because the rates were right. You have it because, because there was money in the districts.
All right, when we combined the districts, I wanna say we had approximately about a two million dollar unencumbered balance. And we were able to combine them all enough to, but we knew that we were operating at a deficit. And I know I made that clear to the Commissioners. I remember standing right at that podium and explaining it to them. I think that was sometime during twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, I believe.
Yes. Because they asked me, well, what can you do? I said, there's nothing we can do to make these bulk water rates go down, and we are eventually going to run out of money. I remember telling them that directly during one of the Commissioners' meetings from that podium.
Oh.
And now we're eventually running out of money.
All we can do is make it known that. We had no part in it, and it came across our desk, and now here we are. Commissioner? I mean, I don't know, the only other choice is to vote it all let down and then it goes bankrupt, and then we, I don't know.
It's kinda similar to our contract we have with J F S. They were locked in, they were paying less money for insurance because of a contract.
Oh, Commissioner, that's not just J F S, that was countywide.
Like, countywide. So we were supplementing that. We're not going back and telling the people, you need to pay us all the money back. We're saying, you were lucky you didn't have those rate increases for eight years. You should have had. But we're not going back and asking them for more in those years they didn't pay. We're not going back and asking someone, pay us more money that you should have paid us five years ago.
Commissioner, the, okay, so the health insurance, yes, valid point, is a, you can kinda run it parallel to what you're seeing here. However, and please don't, anybody take offense to what I'm saying, but as soon as I got my foot in the door, I took the heat. So I can understand where Commissioner's coming from slightly. I understand where you're coming from as well. I understand where you're also coming from. That's my job and team of resources to figure out how the heck we figure something out. But, that being said, I took a lot of heat and a lot of slack and continued to take it because of that point.
And stopped kicking the can down the road.
Well, hold on, but I stopped kicking the can down the road, and I continued to get that consistent pushback and slack from county employees. That's where it's different. Yes, we're providing, H R is providing a good in means of a health insurance. That's a good, that's a, but our employees are absorbing that cost. And we are absorbing that cost. The difference here is, this is a good where Trumbull County citizens are absorbing the cost. You're more than likely not gonna get Trumbull County citizens complaining about increasing health costs to employees. Think about it. Because let's look what's going on right now at a federal and a state level. Of course, everybody's cutting costs, okay? Yeah, I'm not popular for it, never will be, but I came in and did my job. That's what you hired me to do. Because what I would have been doing, and still very well, and I told you this when this happened, I would have to go to the general fund and say, okay, Commissioner, subsidize twenty-two point two million dollars a year to pay for health insurance then, because that's how much we're expending, twenty-two point two million dollars, okay? We're not talking about two million dollars here. We're talking about twenty-two point two annually. That's how much your premiums are in this county. With that being said, it's the chicken before the egg, or the egg before the chicken.
Gary, in combining the districts, had you not combined the districts, you still would have had to raise rates on certain districts that were failing. Which, what top three would have had the biggest increases if we would not combine them?
It would have been Warren Township, Braceville, and Mosquito Creek.
Those would have had, including Vezetta, would have had huge astronomical increases.
Was that a chance, is that a champion? They would have had to have a significant one too.
And Howland was operating in the red also, right?
Yeah, well.
Howland lost four hundred thousand dollars.
So four of our seven, or five of our seven districts.
Nobody's arguing how much money you lost last year. But my argument is, the rate increases should have been ten years ago, not now.
Well, they weren't losing money years before that.
Yeah.
We agree.
It's said that a rate increase was needed in ten years ago, and they didn't get it.
We should have did those pass-through increases the whole way through.
Right.
And they may not even be asking for an increase right now.
And it wasn't done, right.
No, but we all would have been paying more than they are now.
Yeah.
And for the last nine, eight, seven, six, five.
A little bit more, not, not, not what you're gonna hit these people with now.
Still be the same amount, total.
Yeah, but you're gonna hit these people now, when you're gonna have electric rates going up, the sewer rates going up, the water rates is going up, price of eggs is going up. They're, we're gonna be hitting these people on fixed incomes like they've never seen it before. And it's gonna be your, mine, and Rick's fault. They're not gonna say, well, passport. And it's really, it's been the passport's fault. It's not our fault. Cause they didn't do their job.
Well, and ultimately, it's no one's fault within the county. It is Niles, Newton Falls.
Oh, yeah.
Warren, those, I mean, that's where our cost.
When you get a pass increase, and you know that it's costing you more money than you're taking in, then you need to raise those rates.
And I agree with you a thousand percent, and that wasn't done by nobody at this table.
Absolutely.
I mean, and so ten years ago, like, Gary was designing projects.
Three years ago, it wasn't done. Ten years ago, it wasn't done, and three years ago, it wasn't done.
Which, three years ago, and I believe you have a copy, I think I gave everybody a copy of the resolution, we brought it to the board, and the board didn't do. And that, that's why we're here now with the emergency.
Meanwhile, Alex Stevens Jonesy-Bush, I hear, and again, I'm just, I hear people asking for more projects, more water. We do comprehend that. We can't do that if we don't even have the ability to supply bulk water.
Well, the debt.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna call it.
Yeah, the debt from the projects comes on of.
It does, but you have to supply water to that eventually.
Capital charges, that sort of thing.
But you have to get water there, Gary, yes or no?
Right.
Right, but those people would pay for the lines, like that lady who was in here earlier.
But they're not paying for the water increase though, Commissioner. That's what I'm trying to tell you right now.
So our water, what she's saying.
But you add more users to the base, it brings the price for everybody down.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. It doesn't. It does not.
To an extent, I know it does.
Well, so what, so the projects are all funded by capital charges or assessments. So when we talk about debt, we take thirty-year loans out, and then only the people in that project area pay for them.
Pay off, correct.
So if they don't pay us, we assess their taxes.
But you still have to supply them water.
But as we're supplying them water.
You're increasing costs.
If we did a project.
Well, we're increasing revenue, though.
But if we, if we're.
But you're losing, but you're, if you're not, you're away.
I see where you're getting at.
Okay.
Because the new twelve, they had.
Thank you. That's what I'm saying.
Like, in the olden days, we would do a project and we would recoup revenue because we'd be selling water for more than what we're buying for.
Right. Right.
Currently.
You are not there.
That we are buying water and selling it to lots. So if we do projects and expand our customer base, we're actually expanding the loss because we're not profiting off the water.
Which is what, and I know that this is an unpopular thought, but you have to understand that. Because when Townships and all these municipalities are coming to you guys as the Board of Commissioners and the Sanitary Engineers Department saying, I want to petition for water.
If we keep the rates where they are.
What do you, you have to look at all these things, five years, ten years, fifteen years. We have to start now. We are dealing with a hand of bad cards. I get that. I came into it with health insurance. I get it. That's why I'm here. But we can't go back, but we gotta figure this out. What's our five-year plan look like? What's our ten-year plan look like? That's what this Board of Commissioners is tasked to do. Would like my help, I'm here. If not, so be it. But you guys need to help them provide, you have to provide them with those facts and be realistic. Because saying that adding these projects isn't gonna hurt us more, if you don't increase the rate, guess what? It is gonna hurt us more. And guess what? What did we just spend all this capital money on? Putting out more lines to not be able to supply water. We've gotta start thinking like that, like ten years ago, maybe like twenty. Hurry. And I'm, and I'm on it.
And the handouts too. I don't believe taking from one department to give to another or supplementing or wor- working on debt, I don't believe that's the right way to go either. I believe you get a service, you pay for it, and, and that's it. You can't pay for it, you don't get that service.
You still take it.
No fun.
No, you still take it.
I still think it is.
Well, I don't, I don't know what else to say, Commissioner. I, I don't wanna raise rates either. I'm with you. I'm a no vote today. If, if we voted on this tomorrow, I'd be a no vote and then I'd cross my fingers and pray and hope Gary pulls a rabbit out of his hat, but, uh, but the, the responsibility is on our shoulders to either be like the past and kick it down the road and let someone else worry about it, let someone else pay for it and be like previous administrations or we said are so godly, the box office.
Problem with debt is they're going out of, the problem with debt is they're going out of business.
Yeah, the bill collectors coming.
I mean, how do you do that when you're going out of business?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know.
Ran out of road.
But everybody knew that there, that, that there was a dead end on that road, but no one wanted to say it.
Oh, I, I, I let the previous board know. I, 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 I don't know how to answer that, Commissioner.
It would have never happened in the last board. And I'm just calling a spade a spade. There was a Commissioner up for reelection. There was another Commissioner that hates everybody in that department. Would have done anything they can to see that department failed. So.
Always gonna be a Commissioner up for election.
And Commissioner Paul Beatty.
I understand that. I, I'm just saying, there's, there's reasons behind all of the stuff.
Wow, Lisa, you talked.
Well, I try not to. I try to let you guys.
Yeah, to get it off you.
It is a good point, though.
Raymond, did you print that, Lisa Talk?
No, please don't.
All right, so, so this is a presentation, Commissioner.
I don't know. I think this was a presentation.
Is this enough of a presentation or do you need more? What, what?
I mean, I, I don't know.
Maybe not that they can present me, they're gonna change my mind.
I mean.
What is our solution then?
I, I don't know.
We vote them down, no, it's apparently is what's gonna happen. What do we do?
I, I don't know. I don't know what this is. But I think, I think the people need to know what has transpired the last ten years. I, I think we need to educate them, um.
That they should have been, had the rates raised on them every year.
And you know what? I mean.
They should have.
You know, this stuff, everything was fine and we had all this money. None of that's true. All the, all the stuff that I heard before I got here, it's all lies. None of it's true.
Who, who'd you hear everything was fine?
Everybody says we're financially, we're in great shape, this is good, that's good. I haven't seen evidence of that at all.
But who said that? I never, when I came in, I knew we were in trouble.
The board, the board up here, every week you guys said, oh, we got all this money, we got this, we got that, this is fine, great county, we're moving ahead. I haven't seen it. Have you, Rick?
No. I haven't seen it. I mean, we're in budget talks, we, we gotta cut, we gotta, you know, all kinds of stuff going on. I just, I have to be realistic in knowing that, yeah.
Are we in better shape than we were yesterday? Absolutely. Do we have more business coming in than we did two years ago? Absolutely. Did we lose General Motors and rebound from that? We're on the rebound from that. We've got the Fox guns. We got the Kimberly-Clarkes. We got the Energy Center. We got the, the Home Goods and, and we've got.
Financially, we're not better off today than we were yesterday.
Well, the, when you look at the amount of tax dollars we collected this year, this is our budget compared to ten years ago.
How much money do, how much money do we have? We don't, we don't have the, we don't have the extra money. That's what the department heads and the public officials have to understand. You guys have, you guys had some money that you could, when the end of the year, you could supplement their budgets. Benny, we can't do that this year.
I understand that.
And, and, and we have to convey that to them, you know? Next year, we're gonna have to worry about just trying to find the money for the four percent pay raises. What's that gonna cost us? If, if we do nothing else but try to get the money for the pay raises, where are we at next year?
We have to expand our income base. We have to expand our.
The only way you can expand, we have to bring in companies, yeah.
You're gonna bring in companies, you're gonna bring in bodies in our county.
But, but I don't think we're better off today than we were yesterday financially because we're not. Where were we?
I, I don't, I don't buy that either. I don't, I don't, I don't think that message, I don't want that message getting out to the public because I think it's tainted as well.
Well, show me what's different.
Look at the number of businesses we have today.
Show me, show me the amount of money that we have.
Look at the number of taxpayers we have today compared to last year. We got people moving back to this county.
But how much money do we have? As, as the.
I mean, you can't count ARPA. ARPA, that, that, you gotta take that out of existence. Let's look at pre-ARPA years. Let's look at what we did without ARPA.
Look what we could have done with ARPA, if we would have funded nine one one, if we would have funded Dogtown, if we would have funded the coroners.
Hey, I'm with you. When I got here, there was ten million left out of thirty-eight. I spent twenty-eight million in two years on, on many projects that I would have never voted for. What I did is made sure what was left at townships, at least got a taste, got something.
Well.
And that provided a lot of good, including nine ambulances and a lot of infrastructure projects in the townships.
Yeah, but now, now we're gonna either have to go in debt, raise rates, and go in debt to fund these other three projects.
Well, I don't think there's any way we don't go in some debt to fund major projects like that.
Well, if that, if.
We should have had, like you said, ten years ago, we should have water rate increases. We should have had new nine one one center twenty years ago.
Why didn't somebody propose that when you had the thirty-eight million?
When I got here, we did. We did give, uh, nine one one, you know, we got seven, six, seven hundred thousand.
Nobody proposed, nobody, nobody proposed, let's, let's, let's build a new Dogtown, let's build a new coroner's office, and let's do a nine one one center. Then, you know what? That's three huge steps that this board would have.
Okay, so what eight million would you have taken away from it? That, that's just not worthy of what they got.
Well, you know what? Well, you, you would have to take, you'd, you'd have to make those hard decisions.
Which, which one? Which one were you taking? It's easy to say, you should have done this, should have done that. Which one would you have not funded?
I, I would have taken them all off instead of raising the taxes on her, on the taxpayer.
You wouldn't have given Bezetta a road in McLeary Jacoby? You wouldn't have given them a water line up Elm Road? You wouldn't have given them a, a new roadway?
Benny, it's all, it's all, you have to prioritize what's, what's.
You wouldn't have given Scott Street nine, nine hundred thousand dollars sanitary?
Those, those are all good projects, but you know what? Look at the financial shape that we're in. Planning Commission wants us to take out a bond for three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for an elevator. I mean, we're just going into debt.
That's, that's what government does.
No, no, maybe your government, but not mine.
When we get our elevators, we just replaced these elevators with ARPA money. Did you say we shouldn't have done that?
No, no.
They were nineteen fifty-five elevator.
No, I'm, I'm saying we should have spent it on county projects first, because look at the hole we're in now. Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
A second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
I need to dance her real quick.